It is 6:00. And I call to order the adjourned regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEaglin?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Yeah.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. We move on to agenda items. Item number one, discussion and possible action on establishing the annual budget for fiscal year 2015-2016 as set forth in the resolution below. Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution?
We do have a couple of revisions to the agenda that I will announce, Mayor Garcia. These are on the dais and have been made available to the public. The first one is a memo and revised summary section of the draft budget. The second is, there are two resolutions. The first one is for the Victorville Housing Trust, Resolution BHT 15-001, and a resolution for the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Resolution Number RSA 15-003. And those are all the revisions I have.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, we began to discuss the budget last week, and Deputy City Manager Bill Webb gave an overview. And before we got into any department specifics or any Q&amp;A, there was interest on the council to have a full workshop. So we moved all the budget items to tonight's meeting. And we've expanded the PowerPoint somewhat. Not 100% sure how much detail you'd like tonight, but we're prepared with a bit of an expanded PowerPoint presentation, as well as a more prepared discussion from each department head. And so, if I might, I will turn it over to Mr. Webb.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia, councilmembers. Tonight's budget workshop will consist of four sections. The first is the Budget Process, which is a brief overview of our priorities and constraints. The second is the Capital Improvement Plan. That'll be presented by the City Engineer. Third, we have department summaries, where each department head will explain the primary responsibilities of their department, as well as what has changed in this budget. And finally, the Calpers' contribution, which will be presented by personnel, by the Personnel Officer. And we'll start with the Budget Process. The annual budget process begins with the City Council financial goal established at the strategic planning workshop held on January 9, 2014. That goal is stated as "Financial Strength as a City: A Balanced Budget and Budget Reserves", while emphasizing other budget-related council priorities also established at that workshop, which consisted of Public Safety, Public Support and Trust, Economic Development, Improved Roads, and Code Enforcement. Next, we move on to the actual process, beginning with revenues, which are projected by each department consisting of fees and fines. In addition, the largest revenues are gathered and projected. Those include sales tax this year at almost $22 million, property tax at almost $16 million, franchise tax at $3 million, and transient occupancy tax at $1.2 million. The revenue assumptions are explained on pages 13 through 15 of your proposed budget. The total citywide projected revenue this year is projected at almost $177 million. Next is a slide which shows, this is a new slide, which shows last year versus this year, so you can see the change in revenues. We will later be showing a change in expenditures also. So the blue is last year, and it shows charges for services have increased in our projections by about 16%, while taxes have decreased by approximately 1.3%. Other revenue has increased by 11.1%, and then it goes on to the smaller ones, investment income, intergovernmental, licensing and permits, and fines and forfeitures. Simultaneous to that, the department heads are proposing what their expenditures will be. And when expenditures were initially projected, they surpassed revenues by over $7.5 million. Department heads were then told of the deficit and directed to reduce all costs to the minimum necessary to maintain the current level of service, with the exception of legal obligations and City Council commitments, such as airport debt service, other debt service, legal fees, public safety, and the Capital Improvement Plan, which consists of roads and infrastructure improvements, including SCLA. Of those expenditures, at total, those expenditures amount to almost $96 million. Subtract that from the revenues, and the remaining revenue, we have a remaining revenue of approximately $80.8 million. And that was left to support the projected expenditures of over $88.5 million. So we had a problem. We were upside down. This chart, or this diagram, shows the citywide expenditures by department. As you can see in the projections from last year to this year, we're showing the percentage that each department either increased or decreased. Public Safety was up a little. Water was up 7.1%. Community Services, 7%. Airport Debt Service is up 0.3%. Municipal Utilities, 2.3%. Sanitary Sewer, up 19.4%. Engineering, down 13%. Public Works, up 10.4%. These are all compared to last year. Airport Operations, down almost 17%. Admin Services, up 3.7%. Economic Development, down 25.4%. Development, up 5.7%. Administration, down 12.1%. General is down 18.6%. That consists of transfers such as the golf contract, the mall sales tax, things transferred out of the general fund. And golf, up 5%. It's important to note in those comparisons that I just cited, that those are all out of various funds, and were affected differently at some of the larger changes to this budget, including the comp and the class and comp study adjustments, as well as COLA increases and other issues such as that, depending upon staffing, funding, et cetera. As you know, it wasn't carried out across the board. There were variations in the class and comp as to which classes and which positions and which groups needed to be adjusted the most. And that played some part in that. And in summary of this section, after a few more rounds of budget cuts to areas other than known council priorities, the proposed budget was achieved providing a general fund surplus of $411,308 for City Council or Public Safety requests, such as, these are just options, one public information officer, one police deputy in trailing bloodhound, and a six-month fire truck lease. The budget also includes Park's DIF funding of $20,000 for possible skate park planning or land acquisition if the council so chooses. In closing of this section, I would like to also note that when comparing last year's budget to this year's budget, they differ in approximately $10 million. In checking on that, $1 million of that is attributed to increased cost in public safety. $8 million of that is, can be attributed to the Capital Improvement Plan, which means the hopes are that we secure more funding and we can do more improvements to streets, infrastructure, et cetera. So there was very little room for any discretionary spending. The other million was more than absorbed alone in the adjustments per class and comp, COLA, et cetera, which came out to more than $1 million. So again, there wasn't much room for discretionary spending when we're talking about council, or our priorities are determined by the council, and they are the community's priorities. And it was more an attempt to preserve those priorities than the luxury of actually selecting priorities for any discretionary spending, as far as this budget goes. Next, I'd like to introduce the City Engineer.
Can we ask questions?
Yes.
Well, I had some questions on just about every one that came up, but I didn't want to interrupt you. Can you go back? Is that okay?
Please. I had a question on the expenditure slide.
Yes.
Go back to the first slide.
Okay.
That's okay.
Brandon, can you go back to the first slide, please?
In regard to the airport debt service and the redevelopment agency has been done away with, but as I understand it, we are continuing to receive the tax increment to pay bond indebtedness, but somehow, somewhere, we're in arrears. Where is that shown? How much in arrears? And I know that the amount of income is available to pay all the past debts, money that's in arrears, but I don't have an answer. Are we still in arrears? Did it get paid? What was the disposition of the state when we made the request?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. We do report the arrears. We are in arrears. In fact, we just issued a public disclosure to the investment community, I believe it was last week, in regards to all of the bonds. And there's about nine series of bonds outstanding by the Airport Authority, and effectively two, the very subordinate issues, do show deficiencies and defaults. We actually account for that on separate ledger, not as a part of the budget, because it's effectively accrual. But we do budget that and disclose that separately, and that's readily available. We can very easily give that to you. I think to just generally characterize the bonds, what we do budget is the total debt service obligations recognized in the bond indentures, and that's the obligated expenditure. Now, every year, monies get reconciled from property taxes through the VITA organization, which then distributes money to Victorville, and we use whatever is collected to satisfy the bonds. The issue that we have right now is the money that we do receive as Victorville is not 100% of what this total obligation is. So there is a shortfall, but for budgeting purposes, we do show the revenue effectively and the expenditure being equal, because we cannot show an intent to default the bonds. Really, they're a function of whatever is actually received. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Is the shortfall because there's not enough taxes produced or collected, or is it because some of the money is taken away for other purposes?
Right now, there is a deficiency in the amount actually produced, largely due to the decline in assessed valuation since the '09 fiscal year. Property taxes have dropped off dramatically throughout the entire project area. So the collections have been down and have not caught back up to our peak 2008 year. So right now, it's just a simple deficiency of actual revenue.
And property taxes is projected to be less than budgeted or less than we collected for last year? Either way, why?
Mayor Protem Cox, are you talking about the property taxes for the tax increment?
No.
Airport bonds or property taxes for the city?
Property taxes has revenue to the city.
So property taxes as revenue to the city, this year is actually projected lower than what we budgeted last year. There was an error that we discovered from 2013 that had unfortunately carried forward last year and this year. And we corrected that error with this budget, which shows a reduction. It's actually, we're budgeting about a 4% increase in property taxes, but because of the error, the budgeted amount actually goes down.
Okay.
Keith, when you say we're in default, or that there are deficiencies, these are, they're not absolute, they're timing deficiencies. We are able to catch those up with the next disbursement of property taxes from the county. Am I right when I say that?
There's that, but there is a collective dollar shortfall. So the revenue collectively over the two periods of time, the two distributions that we get, is not sufficient to pay 100% of debt service currently. We are seeing, finally, I think this is the second fiscal year that we reported in our continuing disclosure report, we are seeing a slight increase in what we call the tax increment funds that secure those bonds. So last fiscal, I believe it was 2%, and we're experiencing, or believing, 3% or 4% increase in the upcoming fiscal year. So we're finally believing that we're out of that trough, and there's actually an increase in the tax increment being generated. But we're actually predicting a few more years to where, if things continue along the projection that we currently have, there's probably a couple of years to where we can actually get to level par with the tax increment meeting the debt service.
And the only security for those bonds, for that indebtedness, is tax increment. The bondholders have no call against anything except that tax increment.
That's correct.
Which is in the nature of the bond financing.
That is correct.
Next slide, please, Brandon. Questions on this slide?
Well, this was with the taxes, and that was been answered, and that's all I had on this particular one.
Next slide, please, Brandon. Okay.
And it covers the same thing.
Okay, next slide, please.
No, I do have a question on the capital improvement projects for the road, SCLA, and so on, $29 million. Is that a published list yet? I mean, I saw a list someplace, but it was a very extensive list over a five-year period.
Yeah, the back half of the budget book is the entire CIP.
Okay, all right. I only spent three days on this. I didn't get to the back page.
That's our, that's our next portion of the presentation, so you'll get a lot more detail on the CIP at that point.
Other questions?
Next one.
Well, the remaining revenue of $80 million was left to support project expenditures of over $88 million, and since the budget is not an authorization to spend, staff isn't allowed to over-expend, where did you cut the $8 million from?
Each department, as they present, can answer. I can tell you right now, from administrative services, there was approximately $1 million cut from improved and upgrades to technology.
So that it was all cut before it got in the budget, so we don't have a budget?
Absolutely. The budget is balanced with the surplus at this point.
That's the only question I had on that.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, as you recall, when you were the City Manager, the very first round of budgeting, department heads have a bit of a wish list going, and it's a matter of trimming that down to what will actually fit within the revenues.
Is that it?
Next slide, please, Brandon.
The Water Department shows an increase of expenditure of 7.1. Is that because of capital or operations, or both?
Yeah, why don't you take that, and we can get more detail later.
What I see when I look at that is there's an increase. And one of the things I always look at in the budget, if there's an expenditure, what's the income? And I know it's there, I just didn't find it, because I just, it makes me wonder if costs go up 7.1%? Do we have reserves to cover it? Is somebody going to project an increase in water? Also, I was absolutely promised without any question, the water issue would be discussed because of that second bump of $16, $17, and we haven't addressed that yet.
No, not yet.
When are we going to address it?
Well, the water will be discussed when the department heads each come up and discuss their department, as far, which is following, as far as what that is, that is capital improvement projects.
And the water-
And they do have the reserves to more than cover it.
Right. The water rate study is something that the City Clerk, I know, has contacted the council members to try to get on the calendar for discussion with the consultant who's doing that study.
And I will state this for them, that the list of capital improvement projects is contingent upon the outcome of that study.
Okay.
Next slide, please, Brandon.
Sanitary Sewer is also up 19%. Will that be a separate, I mean, are we going to discuss every single department?
Yeah, we have a, we have a plan to discuss each department.
Yes, we are prepared to have every department head come up and explain, answer any questions, give a brief overview. And again, that is also, sanitation sewer is also capital improvement projects, is what I'm told.
Yeah. Next slide, there you go. I don't think there's anything new there. I think we can go to the next slide.
That starts the next section.
That's the next section. Okay. Any other questions from the council on the summary sections before we move into the Capital Improvement Plan? No? Brian? Or is yours?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm going to be relatively brief on the Capital Improvement Plan, and then I'll open it up for any questions you may have. Just to give a overview of the plan, it involves a number of categories, as you can see, streets, traffic signals, drainage, sewer water, airport, the Vemus Municipal Utilities, facilities, equipment, and then the technology are some IS-type improvements. Funding sources, as you know, there are a lot of funding sources. It's a complex funding for the various projects, Measure I, the Local Transportation Fund, Airport Operations, Vemus, Water, Sewer, Storm Drain, federal and state grants. The overall budget, as you've seen, is almost $30 million. One thing that I would like to point out, this is not directly related to this slide, but in the revenue, the current draft budget didn't show Measure I revenue coming in this fiscal year, but actually, we have started receiving Measure I revenue again. And so, it's about $4.5 million of Measure I revenue that we will be getting this coming fiscal year, and we're already receiving it now. So in the budget, it shows the Measure I balance going negative, but it's really not going to go negative. There will be a positive fund balance of over $3 million for projects. So that's good news. And the other thing to note is the overall CIP is increasing about 25% for this fiscal year. If you break it down into the various categories, some of the major increases are in streets, about $3 billion, in water, about $2.5. And so, overall, if you average out the whole CIP, it's increasing roughly 25% over this year. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Brian, just a question. We have Measure I and we have Road DIF. And I know they're totally separate funds, but they do more or less the same thing. They work on streets and roads. Can you explain in 25 words or less, the difference between Road DIF and Measure I?
Measure I can be used for anything for street-related purposes.
And it comes from sales tax?
It comes from the half-cent sales tax, county-wide sales tax. We get the pass-through, we get about $4.5 million a year. And it's like gas tax, in that it can be used for street-related purposes, which is very broad category, maintenance, projects, et cetera. Whereas, the road development impact fee is more restrictive, because there's only a certain list you can spend the Road DIF on, and that is only for certain arterial roads, and it's only building new roads. You can't use it for maintenance. So that's the main difference.
Brian, what's our current development impact fee for roads only for each, say, new home built? You know that off the top of your head?
I remember, it's $4,400 for a single family.
Thank you.
One question. On page seven, under Special Revenue 352, DIF, Road Services, and I'll thank you for taking spendable, I spent a little time trying to figure out what that was. But according to your estimated fund balance July 1, 2015, $14 million plus, and balance June 30, 2016, $14 million. I know we have revenues, and I know we have expenditures, but it doesn't show them here. They're shown someplace else, and is there any reason why it can't be shown here? Or is it because road is so many different categories, they're shown in the other categories?
Let me go grab my budget book. I have it back here.
Mr. Cox, which revenue number were you talking about?
352.
352.
DIF, Road Services. I know it's because I can't read the budget. I apologize for that. But I know that we're not going to start with $14 million and end with $14 million and only spend $775,000, because our roads are a mess.
And that $12,000 expenditures doesn't seem to be enough.
I don't know how that balance is calculated. I do know that the actual cash available is a fraction of that, because I know we looked at that recently. We made a payment to Sandbag to pay down what we owe on the interchange. So I'm not, I'm not really sure what all goes into that particular number, but it's definitely a smaller number than the $14 million.
Wasn't the payment to Sandbag Measure I funds?
No, actually, it would be the Road DIF, and then it comes back as Measure I.
I see.
Well, I thought it was probably related to the agreement that we had on the Niskali Interchange, but I couldn't find an explanation. So I didn't want to assume it, because we did some trading of dollars to-
Is the cash not there because there's a $21 million deficit in the public buildings DIF? I mean, do all these DIFs go into one cash bucket?
Ultimately, in the accounting statements, they are rolled up into one, one number. I think trying to determine that right at this moment is going to be difficult for us. So certainly, we'll have it to the council tomorrow, some explanation of that $14 million.
If I could, if you would be interested, I could highlight a few of the upcoming CIP projects. It's up to you on how you want me to spend the time tonight on this subject.
I have a quick question on street sweeper. And I believe we purchased or approved a purchase for a street sweeper early in the year. How many street sweepers do we have?
I would have to defer to Doug Matthews on that.
Okay.
He's going to be getting into the Public Works when we do the department summary.
Yeah, we currently have five street sweepers and four operators for them. We had one that was totaled this past year due to a traffic collision that was not our operator's fault. But we run four full-time street sweeper operators.
And has the city ever considered contracting these services?
We've looked at it several times, and it just, to be able to control when and where we sweep easier and make sure we know where they're at, it's just, we have more control over what they're doing and where they're at if they work under us, as opposed to contracting. We didn't see any savings in the budget as well, and there's other cities that have been doing it, and they're not really that happy with it. I think Hesperia is one of them. They end up not sweeping the center lanes of the streets out there because of it. So that's something we do perform. And we studied it pretty heavily in 2009, 10, maybe even 11, I don't recall, and ultimately ended up eliminating one of the street sweeping positions for a couple of years, and then brought it back recently.
So there's four operators, five street sweepers?
Correct.
And if this is approved, there would be six street sweepers?
We'll still only have four operators, and there's only four operators in the budget. And we're down a street sweeper because it was totaled. So the goal is to have usually one extra street sweeper. They require a lot of maintenance, and one of our sweepers is more of a specialized street sweeper, so it's not really used full-time a lot of the time. So it's, the budget allows for the four operators, and that's really where the budget goes to, is in your personnel, as well as maintaining the machines is quite expensive.
I understand that. And so, next year, will we be asked for another street sweeper and another street sweeper? I mean-
I would love to hire as many as you can. I would love to hire as many as you'll give me. I ask every year, but that's my wish list that kind of goes, so...
Or what would be a normal, what would be an ideal number of operators and actual machines?
You know, it just really depends on how often you want them swept. I think they're about on a, a two-to-three month cycle in residential streets. We sweep our commercial routes weekly, and we have contracts to sweep the state highways and, and not, and such. So, it really, that's a discussion probably to be had later, is how often do you want to see it happen out there? The more sweepers, the more often we're going to get to it.
Well, the one that's asked for here is replacing a two thousand two. Is the other, are the other street sweepers more than ten years old?
Yeah, they're, they're getting aged out pretty quickly, and we also have some carb requirements that are going to affect us down the road as well. And, and they do take a beating out there, for sure, but our fleet staff and, and our operators do a lot of maintenance activities on them themselves and do a, a pretty great job of keeping them up.
And I understand absolutely about emissions and, and that type of thing, and especially when something becomes no longer serviceable. I, I understand that. But in general, and I'll probably say this again tonight, the rationale for getting other equipment or, or newer equipment, I see some explanations in here, well, this vehicle's over a hundred thousand miles. Well, I understand that we have our priorities and then our nice-to-haves. And so, when it comes to the street sweeper fleet, again, we just, just got a new one. This is in this year's budget. So, in next year's budget, is it anticipated to have another street sweeper?
I think the one we have in next year is a carryover from this year that didn't come through. So, we didn't quite get it ordered. It takes a long time to spec it out and to get it ordered. They're CNG machines, and so, I believe that one's a carryover for the one we didn't get this year. So, it's essentially replacing one that is totaled. And we did get some money back on that, and I'm not quite sure how much we got, but it certainly wasn't the full cost there. Three to four hundred thousand dollars a machine somewhere in that neighborhood.
Bill, how do you want to introduce the next section? Just go. Guess I'm up first. So, the administration portion of the budget is kind of an oddball term. It's kind of a catch-all term for everything sort of on the north end of the building. It's the city clerk's office, city council, city manager, and city attorney, and risk management as well. There are very few changes to this budget as far as any kind of programmatic, there are none. City clerk's office has a two-year cycle for elections, so one year, she cuts a bunch of money from their budget and looks great, because there's not an election, and then next year, her budget's going to increase significantly because there is an election. So, there's about fifty thousand reduced over last year for the city clerk's office because we don't have an election in two thousand and fifteen. So, like I said, don't get too excited, because it'll be back next year, at least, some portion of that. So, any other changes are really incremental. We're adding one conference for risk, excuse me, for records management. There's a national conference that happens that our records manager has wanted to go to and been unable, because it's, hasn't been in California. This year, it happens to be in San Diego, so we're taking the opportunity to send her to that, but other than that, there's, there's nothing new. City attorney budget is not the city attorney. We name it city attorney budget, but it is a combination of the services provided by the city attorney, as well as any contract attorneys. In this case, there is a fairly significant reduction, because the SEC case is set for trial in October, so we are budgeting less this year than we did last year, by about a half a million dollars. It's difficult to know how much that case ultimately is going to cost, but this is our best estimate, is what we're going to need for the four months or so for next fiscal year, from the general fund at least. In the city manager's budget, there are no changes. There are a couple of costs that are reflected a little more clearly in the detailed budget with regard to some retiree costs, and our contract services are down slightly. We just didn't use the money we had this current year, and don't have a need for, for the full amount that we had budgeted, so we're reducing it slightly. So, that's the extent of what we call administration, just as sort of a catch-all for, for those, those budgets. Happy to answer any questions on that. If not, we can move on to the next category.
Questions?
Next slide, please, Brandon.
The next department is Administrative Services. The Administrative Services Department consists of Finance, Human Resources, and Information Technology. The department provides customer service to city personnel and the public, including billing and reconciliation, budget development, and monitoring, labor relations, recruitments, and employee benefits. Also, IT administers, computer technology and networks. There's very little change to the department or the budget, other than an addition, other than two GIS positions requested and funded by Water and Sanitation to provide data collection and creation, mapping, analysis, and related services. And that's to map and monitor and improve the city infrastructure, coordinate that mapping, and improve customer service. Questions? Next, please.
Next up is Christian Gunter, Director of Community Services.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Community Services has both special funds, as well as general funds, that it spends. Water conservation and solid waste and recycling are both special funds. Inside those, the solid waste code enforcement, field crews operate, administration of solid waste disposal contract, community cleanup days, neighborhood cleanup program expansions this year, and Household Hazardous Waste Collection Center, and the MRF is all operated out of that. In our general fund, we have animal control, facilities, golf operations, the library, parks, recreations. Of all of those, we have very few capital improvement projects this year. We've been fortunate enough to be awarded two CDBG projects, one for new HVAC systems for the library, and one for a new roof on the Hook Gym area of the Hook Community Center. That gives you a rough summary of the department. If you have questions specifically, I'd be glad to answer.
Have a question?
Yes, sir.
Before we adopted, before the city adopted the resolutions and combined the taxes that comes into the general fund, we had taxes that went into sanitation, fire, and parks. And the taxes produced a figure, several tens of, well, several millions of dollars. But the amount to operate the parks from the general fund was a substantial subsidy. Now that it's combined, I suppose there's no way to figure out how much the taxes that used to be allocated to the park are still allocated to the parks. As the cost, the expenditures keep going up, I'm assuming that the general fund is the only place that subsidy can come from? Someone speak about that?
Sure, we could go back and at least make somewhat of an estimate, based on the final year that the Wreck and Park District, the Fire District, and the Sanitary District were in existence, to determine how much of the, what is now general fund property taxes it may have been, assuming all those percentages would have stayed the same, which they likely would have. Another piece of that is actually library, which is separated out. We don't have it tonight, obviously, but that's information we can get to the council. The Parks and Recreation Services are no longer a subsidy of the general fund, they are part of the operating budget of the general fund, so... But you are correct, both the Fire District and the Wreck and Park District, when they still had property tax separate from the city, relied very heavily on the city's general fund as a subsidy, as a transfer in and out. That was one of the reasons why we dissolved those districts, was because it was essentially just, just accounting work, and there was no opportunity in the future for those funds to ever make up that surplus or repay that loan, if you wanted to call it that. Similarly, the Sanitary District collected millions of dollars more than it, than it used, and so, monies were accumulating there without a purpose. So, dissolving the three funds actually helped us balance the general fund out a little bit better and not have those, those transfers in and out every year.
A question, question.
Yes, sir.
Facilities are up two hundred thousand, parks are up three hundred thousand, recreation is up a hundred and fifty, and library is down a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Can you explain the priorities and what's happening in those different?
Yes. One of the reasons the library is down is because there are no capital improvement projects specifically set aside for it this year. That's why it went down. The library operates at a fairly constant level, based on tax increment. They generally don't exceed the tax increment that comes into the city. This year, as I said, we've gotten at least one CDB, CDBG project coming up that we'll be able to fix the HVAC systems with in the two thousand and sixteen fiscal year. However, last year, excuse me, the current year we're in, we actually had two, one for new parking lot lighting, and another one for, I believe it was roof repair.
It was up a lot from the year before.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why are facilities and parks and wreck higher?
Okay. We've added some to facilities in terms of their operations and maintenance budget. We found some shortfalls that we needed to cover. Facility is not so much as parks. The big issue in parks this year that happened was the court workers. We lost approximately nineteen thousand hours of volunteer time over the course of a twelve year period that accumulated to parks, maintenance in the parks. Because of that, we are going to be adding some part-time staff to at least operate a skeleton crew and try and keep on top of everything. That actually accrues about an additional eight thousand hours of part-time workers to our budget, and that's the biggest increase in parks. In addition, there was a, there is actually twenty thousand dollars put in our budgets for a possible skate park, or at least looking at maybe some design work, or even land acquisition for a skate park, if that's something the council wants to do. I've actually gone to our CSAC committee and asked them to poll each, each one of you, and tell us what you'd like. We'd like to know. So, when you do have a chance to speak with your CSAC member, please tell them, we love to listen to you. So, Parks and Rec is something that we're pretty proud of here.
Why do you think we lost the volunteers?
Let me handle that one, Christian.
Sure, go ahead.
That was somewhat my doing. The county essentially gave us a thirty-day notice that they were terminating the work program for court work sentence folks, and we had the option of signing up for a different program that shifted the risk for any workers' compensation claims over from the county to the city. There was a fairly recent court case that someone who was a quote volunteer, and it's a bit of a euphemism, because they're a volunteer, because the court has told them they're a volunteer.
Bad kind of volunteer.
These are not good, I'm sure there's some good folks, I'm sure some of them work hard, but they're not there because they care a lot about the parks and want to volunteer and work hard. They're there because they're required to by law. But anyway, the shift occurred, or could have occurred, and because of the court case, we were leery of bringing in ten to twenty to thirty quote volunteers each weekend, or during the weekend for some of them, that potentially could go from earning nothing to having a fairly sizable workers' comp claim if they had an injury. Some of our own workers' comp history with some of these folks cost us thirty to forty thousand dollars for at least one case. There was another one that was somewhat less than that. So, rather than take the risk of, you know, what I fear is that these court workers who tend to talk with each other, once they learn that a relatively minor injury could result in a, in a payday, if they simply hire a lawyer, who I'm sure would do it on a contingency basis, I think that there's going to be a rash of new workers' comp claims through that process. So, rather than take a chance and attempt to budget some unknown amount for workers' comp claims, instead, we went with a set amount to hire additional part-time employees who we can then monitor for performance and make sure that we are getting every hour of work out of them.
Was this negotiable with the county, or just take it or leave it?
It was a take it or leave it. They terminated the contract and gave us thirty days to sign the new one.
So, all the people that have, can work, can't work anywhere?
Some of the cities actually signed the new contract, others apparently already had that contract in place. So, some of the cities I know are still using them, you know, if ultimately, my theory on their performance and their workers' comp history proves out to be wrong, we can always, I'm sure, contract with the county to bring them back. But at this point in time, it just seemed too risky to do it. I mean, we've had work comp claims that are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that are simply unknown until someone gets injured.
In addition, we also have, our park staff has to be very diligent with the court workers that are sent up. They literally spend time, once they show up, they actually go back with any volunteers and check Megan's Law site and verify that all the information is correct, and it isn't always. So, then we send them home. We don't let them on the properties. So, we're, it takes time to manage the program. Having the additional part-timers gives us an opportunity to vet people properly, to make sure they're doing their jobs, and assign them a steady work and a steady location where they're efficient.
And I'd just like to comment that I think that that was the right decision. Being in the insurance business, dealing in workers' comp claims on a daily basis, you're bound to see an increase in the types of claims that would have been detrimental to the city, and I think what, what you did was the right decision, because without a doubt, those cities that have chosen to take on that risk will pay the price.
Yeah, I think we have, correct me if I'm wrong, Christian, but a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in additional part-time hours that, that is literally one or two claims in workers' comp.
Yeah, in the end, it would cost the city a lot more money.
I, I believe it would have. Certainly, you know, the jury's still out, because it was a very recent court case, but ultimately, the, the court sentenced worker was able to recover tens of thousands of dollars from whomever he filed the claim on, so...
I think it was the right decision. I just think it's a sad, sad commentary. That can occur. Really is.
And, you know, what's interesting is, we've got groups, organizations, you know, churches that would love to volunteer and help us out, and yet, every time that question gets asked, it's always a liability issue, yet somehow, we can let incarcerated people work in our parks and, and do that type of thing. We ought to really explore how we can allow local community organizations, churches, you know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, whomever wants to help out in the city, be able to do it without incurring so much liability on the city and/or those organizations, because I'm telling you, people want to help. They just are always told, no, you can't do it because we have too much liability. I know that's a risk management issue, I'm in that business, but there's got to be a way that it's done, because I know it's done in other cities, we ought to figure out how to do it here.
Yeah, we are actually actively working on that, trying to improve our volunteerism program, and make sure that the safeguards are in place, but that we actually allow folks to volunteer. We can certainly do that. I think it was past staff members who are no longer here, who kind of stopped it from happening for those risk management potentials. I think that, you know, when you're talking about a church group, or someone who has a deep care for the parks or for animals, they're much less likely than someone sentenced to come out and work to file a claim.
Actually, if I may, we actually do have volunteer groups who now come to the parks and help clean up and do things, paint, all sorts of things. Um, we, so long as they can provide a certificate of insurance, naming the city as an additional insured, we have no problem with them coming out. It does cost us a little staff time because we want to be there with them and make sure they're being safe. But we do have them, I won't say once a month, but every couple of months, we, we have those organizations coming out and helping and volunteering. So, we're very happy to have them.
Formal groups, larger groups, but we would like an individual, uh, volunteerism program. We're, we're trying to get something.
Yeah, I, and there are groups out there that aren't going to have the insurance or the ability to provide that, and that, that's where the issue lies, is allowing people to volunteer without having to provide indemnification to the city, naming them as an additional insured. Uh, we do that all the time in my business, so I get that, and I'm, I'm appreciative that we have that part. Just trying to figure out the other part of it and, and allowing a much broader range of volunteers.
There's, there's two pieces. One is, you know, potential for, uh, a workers' comp, comp-type claim. Um, I think that's relatively low. Um, in the past, uh, there's also been concerns with some of our, uh, human resources staff, um, that are no longer here about, um, the appearance that we're having volunteers do work that would otherwise be done by salaried employees. Um, and we were, in the past, never able to get past that.
I think we've got to explain, if we have volunteer, it'll otherwise not be done, period.
Right, right, right. Yeah, it's something that I think we'll be bringing back, uh, later this year, uh, with a program in place that, uh, will have, you know, council approval, authority, and we can finally open up to, uh, to volunteers on a little easier basis.
Do you have public buildings?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure this would be in your category, but on page seven, under account three fifty, public buildings for the diff fee shows a negative balance of twenty-one million, if I read that right.
Yes, you did. That was, uh-
Yes. That, sort of. That is largely City Hall.
Like golf course as well?
Actually, if I may address a little bit of that, um, one of the things I talked about was the twenty thousand dollars for possible skate park, doing some study, those sorts of things. Um, we have some diff fees sitting there for parks, but it generally is used for new construction, um, and/or paying off existing bonds, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I think one of the things that we were going to do with some of the balance in our accrued diff fees to date was possibly pay down the bonds we owe on the, um, uh, golf course, the Green Tree Clubhouse, so.
Well, there, there's, um, there's a debt on this building here? Did the city sell bonds?
No, the city didn't sell bonds. Uh, the city, uh, effectively overspent public buildings diff, uh, back in, I don't know when, two thousand-
Thousand and seven?
Five, six, seven, somewhere in there, uh, to the tune of, uh, twenty, well, twenty-one million dollars at this point.
Can't write a check on a zero account. Where'd they get the money?
Um, there was, gosh, this has been so many years ago now.
That's another time.
You, you cleaned this up. You were here.
Well, this is, this is one of the things, this is one of the things that we still, we still need to work on. Um, the, uh, public buildings diff, um, gosh, my memory is getting foggy. Um, I recall a meeting in what was these chambers, although it was the old chambers, uh, where the then finance director, Adair, I don't want to mention her last name because I'm not sure which it was at that point, um, effectively stood up and told the council that, um, the budget that they were about to adopt, uh, was contingent on, uh, essentially all, uh, development impact fees being loaned for the construction of City Hall until such time as it was paid. Um, so, that's as formal as it was back then. Um, I was in the audience. I was not involved in finance. I wasn't involved in a lot of things back then, other than a few projects here and there. Um, so, don't, don't roast me for it. I can give you a list of, uh, of folks that were in charge back then if you'd, if you'd like to throw darts at it. But, um, effectively, what it set up was a huge debt, uh, to public buildings' diff, um, or from public buildings' diff. Um, and we are slowly collecting development impact fees. Um, one of the topics of discussion, um, at the strategic planning session last January was fiscal accountability, uh, and we have not gotten to it yet, but, uh, we still need to have, uh, larger workshop-type discussion, uh, about the remaining inter-fund borrowing that we have, and, uh, a discussion about how and when it's going to be repaid and, and bring the, the new council all up to speed on, on what is still sort of hanging out there. We eliminated nearly fifty million dollars in internal borrowing a couple of years ago that I know some of you are very familiar with, uh, but there is still some remaining. Uh, there's some golf course debt, uh, remaining as well, uh, that is, uh, held by, uh, a variety of different funds around the city that ultimately, uh, is a debt of the general fund, uh, and not those other funds. So, we, we have additional cleanup work to do. It's been the story of my career so far as the city manager and deputy city manager, when I worked for you, Jim, cleaning up all these things, and we still have work to do.
Still have work to do. I, I'd just like to see documents in place that the funds have been loaned, that there is an interest rate that's a part of the agreement that the council approved, that interest is being collected and will be given back to those funds in some time, uh, time schedules. I think it's, uh, it's always been important, but it's more important now because we're seeing a resurgence in building. We're going to the newspaper. We're getting a housing tract that started. There are new housing starts all over the city. We are collecting diff fees again, but we need this, I think, documented so that there's no question where the money goes when reflected.
Agreed. Yeah, we, we have kept it separated out. Uh, diff funds have been loaned for diff purposes. We have not, uh, loaned across, uh, accounting types, I'll say. So, when we, back when we set up, Jim, when you and I set up, the, uh, inter-fund borrowing, uh, that was undocumented then for, uh, we kept the RDAs kind of together and had one RDA loan money to the other RDA. Uh, we kept the utilities together and had one utility loan money to the other utility. Those are all funds that, like this, were just sitting as a negative account that was sort of unaccounted for as to which accounts had been used. So, when we put that in place back in, I think it was two thousand and ten, um, it, we, there was some semblance of order as to who was loaning to whom. Uh, diff, uh, was left out at that point, um, as far as a, uh, an actual inter-fund loan being put in place. I agree, we should do that at this point, uh, and we'll be doing that, uh, later this year.
Thank you.
If I could, um, just back up a minute and, um, just provide some overall comments, I think that might be helpful. Uh, just, uh, whenever we do these, to start the meeting with, oh, overall umbrella comments from the city council, so we're all clear about where, uh, what the issues are. And, um, I think we dove down into the details, and I don't mind doing that. That's no problem here. That's why we're here. But, conceptually, if you just presented this budget to me and said, "Do you approve this? Yes or no?" I would say no. And I think the re- main reason why I look at, uh, and, and, and great work, so it, I'm not being critical. I'm just saying I don't support it, because from a priority standpoint as a council, I'd, I'd like to know from this council at some point, do we want to get the city employees back to a five-day work week? I mean, I think if you started there with that premise and then backed yourself into all the other issues that we have, I mean, you slapped together two or three of these items. That's the difference of working four days a week or five days a week. If we defer some of these, uh, equipment acquisitions, uh, a year or whatever it happens to be, there you go. You just paid for going back to work five days a week. So, even though, when we ask questions, and, and for clarification, I know that that, uh, may irritate some folks, but, you know, we're, we're the ones that get held accountable when it comes to, uh, elections and, and voting straight out for a five percent increase, you know, that doesn't look good. And then, the city residents are the ones, obviously, that we're here to service. So, let's start with service. We're not servicing the community five days a week. And so, just based on that alone, I just, I, I have many other issues, uh, but from that, if that's not a council priority, that's fine. It's a priority of mine, whether it's this year, next year, or the next year. Returning the city, I know we had a lot of issues in oh-nine, but things are getting better. So, at some point, are we going to cross that bridge as a council and make that decision, or, or not?
I think a lot of that was rhetorical, but, um, let me respond by saying that the, the cost of that to the general fund would be approximately a million dollars. Um, the equipment purchases that you see are largely from other funds, from restricted funds that couldn't be used to pay, uh, the general fund employee salaries, unfortunately. Um, the, uh, if I had to guess, and it is a bit of a guess, uh, I think, given that the SEC matter will be resolved during this fiscal year, and given that we are still seeing economic growth, uh, my understanding is that the council does want to go back to a forty-hour work week. Um, I think that was made fairly clear, uh, when it was brought up back in February or March. Um, and if I had to guess, I would guess next fiscal year, we will likely be able to do that. Um, unfortunately, just simply maintaining what we currently have, uh, from a budgetary standpoint, the funds aren't there to do that at this point in time, but I, I think we're very close.
Well, again, uh, you know, now you're talking about priorities, and, uh, if you start with that and then back in everything else, I recognize what you're saying about the different pots of money, but, you know, it's just, that's, that's what I'm getting at, is that you look at, uh, the skate park. It has the same amount of attention as a concrete saw, you know? So, um, I don't know. So, I was reluctant last week to, uh, to approve this, but, uh, all right.
Well, I, this matter's come up before. I, I think that this council can't avoid that discussion because we hear from, don't, well, I do hear from the employees that it's great to have Fridays off, but I also hear from the general public constantly that Appal Valley's open every other Friday. I guess Hispari is a, and why aren't we? Not that we need to be exactly like Hispari and Appal Valley, but to have City Hall closed three days every week has worked out as a necessity of not having a lot of construction, not having a lot of development, and not having the money. But it appears that financially things are turning around and construction is beginning to occur, and we are either going to have to, well, we have to have the discussion because you either start open every other Friday, or we're going to have to have some departments working every other Friday, because if you have a building being built and you have your scheduling because of all of the trades that come in, you can't sit from Thursday till the following Monday. You can't do it. It's not acceptable. The private sector will lose too much money, and what we will see is Hispari and Appal Valley, uh, growing and us not. So, it's a discussion we have to have. When do we have it? When's it convenient? I'm not sure, but I certainly think it, uh, sometime in, in the near future, where I think we are going to be forced to have that discussion.
Any more questions for Mr. Gunter? If not, then move on to the next slide.
Unless he has the electric, but I, I don't know who has that and who's that under. I have no questions.
No, that's actually under Public Works. That's under Public Works.
All right, sorry. I have no questions.
Next is the Development Department, Chris Portcher.
Good evening. The primary function of the Development Department is to process development applications as quickly and as efficiently as possible. The Planning Division ensures compliance with zoning, general plan, and state laws. The Building Division complies, uh, ensures compliance with building codes and handicap accessibility. The Business License Division ensures the businesses meet state and local requirements. Code Enforcement, they're there to ensure everyone stays within those rules. The city has always had a goal of trying to incorporate development-related functions together. When Doug moved the Business License Division into development, it got us closer to that one-stop shop that we've been looking for. We didn't quite make it to the one-stop shop, though, because a developer coming to the city had to take a set of plans to the Fire Department as well and get a separate permit, pay a separate fee. Um, but tonight, I can tell you that the Fire, or the building official, Kevin Collins and myself, had an opportunity to sit with Fire Chief Dan Monsey and the Fire Marshal Mike Horton, and we were able to conglomerate some of the things that we do, consolidate them. And so, from now on, we're working towards, in fact, they've already moved. We've moved the Fire team, Dan's team, into the building area, and we've moved Code Enforcement over to where Fire was at. And we've done this so that the Development Department, all plans can come through the Development Department now, even the Fire plans. There won't be a separate submittal requirement, a separate permit. This, um, has enabled us to consolidate a clerk position. We reduced a supervisor position by seventy-five percent, and we, we reduced an inspector. And we, this change alone has saved the city over a quarter million dollars on the Fire contract. So, we're excited about that, and we're excited about getting closer to the one-stop-shop, uh, possibility. And, uh, expenditures, you'll see very little change for the Development Department. In fact, um, most, any increase typically over the last few years has been because we've had our grant allocations reduced. The amount of grants we receive helps to pay for staff, uh, time, and even for, um, services and supplies that we need to buy. We're able to use grant monies for that. Those amounts have been going down over the, the past few years. So, that's accounted for a lot of our increase. For revenues, we are proposing an increase, if you look into our budget, and we're going to be coming to the council next week with proposed changes to the rental business licenses and also business licenses in general. The Business License Division and the, the ordinances that require, that were required in the code, in the municipal code, were from nineteen seventy-one. They don't cover the cost of providing the services and issuing a business license today. So, we will, we will be proposing a new business license fee structure for you next week at the council meeting. We're also going to be proposing a technology fee. I know you, we, we've talked a little bit about technology, about the possibility for residents to-
Excuse me, Chris. Is that, is that increased fee built into this budget?
Yes, it's been proposed in this, in the revenues. And the, what, the technology, we've mentioned it before to you, the ability for a resident to take a picture of a pothole, the ability of a Code Enforcement complaint to be able to send it to us over the internet, uh, we'll be able to take those in. For a development, the development community, it would mean being able to submit bill, for building permits online, to be, have the plans reviewed online, to have comments sent back online, and to have the permit even issued to them in their office. So, that technology is what we're hoping to move to next, uh, to provide for better efficiency and quicker processing of, of plans coming through the department. Again, that's coming to you next week. We'll be proposing those and showing to you those. Other than that, if you have any questions?
The Fire, that, I'm sorry. The, the County Fire Department that's here remains here? They're just in a different office?
They just moved down the counter a little ways. Yes.
Oh, COOPA's staying here, then?
No, that's a different, that's a little bit different than, we're talking fire prevention in terms of plan checkers and, uh, building inspectors for Fire.
Yeah, there, there is a change to COOPA proposed as part of this budget. Uh, I had planned on talking about that when we got to Fire, but we can talk about it now if you'd prefer.
No, Fire's fine.
Okay.
Chris, question. Um, the operation and maintenance, uh, budget expenses are proposed to go up a hundred and fifteen percent, and just looking back over the last several years, i- is this going to your grants comment, or what, explain exactly what's going on?
The, the explanation I got on the two thousand and fifteen budget of one thirty-nine was that we had to submit that budget prior to knowing what our grant allocation was, and therefore it didn't include about a hundred and twenty-two thousand or something. So, it is, it is pretty close to what this year and the previous year were.
Okay, that's all I need.
Thank you, Chris. Next is public safety. I don't know if, uh, Sam or Dan flipped a coin. Looks like, uh, Dan either won and/or lost by getting to go first.
Sheriff's Captain threatened to arrest me if I didn't go first. A firefighter's work as a team, as you know, teamwork is very synergistic, and, and Chris just spent a good deal of time talking about how the County Fire is looking to integrate teamwork into the city government. County Fire takes this teamwork and the synergistic very, very seriously with the cities and the citizens that we served. Since two thousand and eight, um, the Victorville Fire Department under County Fire, our calls for service have increased thirty-three percent, which is about four thousand calls per year. During that time, our budget's only gone up five percent aggregate, total, over that same time period. The reason is, is because we constantly look for ways that we can integrate ourselves with the city. There's a county motto that I really believe in, and that's that nobody's in a silo. And we've been ordered as county employees to look, to tear down silos and to work carefully with the other departments in the county that we serve and in the city that we serve. This year's no exception. Um, our teamwork with the city is incredible. We've been able to keep our costs in check over the years with consolidation and regionalization of services. of services. This year, there's three new ways. First, as Chris described, consolidating fire prevention with the development, and increasing a service to the customers, a one-stop-shop. The ability to submit plans and have our staff work very, very closely without walls with the building officials in Development. County Fire was able to partner with the city in a really unique way this year, too, with the airport. The R station in the airport doesn't run very many calls compared to the other cities, which is good. No airplanes are crashing, thank God. The R firefighters that are there are committed to the airport due to what we call an index, so we have a response that we need to be able to meet at any given time. However, there are times that we can decrease the index, and we don't need all three firefighters sitting on the base. This year, I was able to convince my bosses to fund a firefighter paramedic position and to buy a brand-new squad to put at the airport so that the city firefighter at the airport could partner with that county paramedic and run and respond to fires and emergencies and rescues on the north side of our district to help with the impact of the fourth, the increase of four thousand calls. The third thing is, as you've seen in the budget, there's a lease for a new fire engine. Now, our fire apparatus, like most of the city's cars and vehicles, they haven't been, we haven't had any new apparatus in quite some time. As a matter of fact, some of our fire engines are over twenty-two years old, which the NFPA requirements is that they are replaced every ten years. So this year, I came to the city manager and asked if the County Fire Department were to buy a new fire engine, could we lease it to the city to ensure that we have a safe apparatus? Tonight, I'm proud to announce that the County Fire Department is going, to set up a lease like this in the government, county government, let me tell you, takes a long time, take a year. But I was able to acquire a fire gen this August that I'm going to put into Fire Station Three Fourteen that will replace a twenty-two-year-old apparatus. And that thirty-three thousand dollars that you see in your budget's going to go away. We're not going to charge the city of Victorville for this apparatus for this year. I mentioned the county squad that's going to be going to the airport to be able to respond to medical aids and rescues. That's provided by the County Fire Department. And also, we were able to enter an agreement with CALIMA or OES, California OES, to acquire a Type One fire engine. Type One fire engine is now stationed at Station Three Twelve. It's available for us as a reserve fire engine, so if any of our fire engines break down, we have a great, fully-equipped fire engine for us to respond in. Now, this is at no cost to the city. Our agreement with CalOES is that we will staff that fire engine with our personnel and respond to any emergency in California, but CalOES will reimburse us for our staffing costs and for the maintenance and for everything associated with that vehicle. So moving forward, we're continuing to look for new ways to work with the different department heads in the city and with the city manager, and continue to serve with the city of Victorville. Is there any questions?
Couple of questions. Didn't we just get a brand-new fire truck on a grant?
You did. When Warren Peterson, Chief Peterson, he applied for a grant, and the city was awarded that grant. That new fire engine will be here later next month. It takes about a year to build that apparatus once it's ordered.
Yeah, I don't know that, if you would, how this works. I know we talk about firefighters' paramedics. Is there a paramedic at every station, every shift?
As of July first, there will be. The airport has not had any paramedics assigned to it. Now, they will have a firefighter paramedic assigned to the airport. Every single apparatus in the city has a firefighter paramedic on it.
And I don't know if you know, but we have reactive ambulance company. Do they have paramedics on the ambulance?
Yes, sir. AMR has a contract for this area for providing service. The difference is, is we're the paramedic provider. We typically get to all the calls first, stabilize the patient. AMR shows up later and transports the patient.
Well, if I fall down and bust my knee and call nine-one-one, I'm not going to get AMR. Yeah, you're going to be the first one to get it, but do you really need to respond if it's just a first-aid call?
Yes, sir. We're required to provide those services to our citizens as part of our contract, and also as the paramedic, as the signed paramedic provider. We're there to start your treatment, and while a busted-up knee doesn't sound very serious, sometimes it can be a very serious injury that can require surgery, pain medications, those things. Our paramedics will arrive on scene and start administering that treatment, and then hand the patient off to AMR. Now, one of the reasons why it takes AMR, and I'm not going to downplay AMR at all, they play a very important role, great company. Unfortunately, in this area, the high desert, the hospitals are impacted with just a huge patient overload. Those ambulances can transport a patient to the hospital and be sitting on bed delay, meaning that they're at the hospital with the patient on their gurney for sometimes six to eight hours. There's simply not enough ambulances to go around. During these times, our paramedics are often with the patients, waiting for AMR to be able to get the patients off their gurneys to respond to the calls. Now, we've been very proactive with that situation, too, in the city, because it's greatly affected our operations. When you think that you have a fire engine tied up with a patient administering care, waiting for an ambulance. What we did is, we bought a utility truck, we loaded it full of gurneys, and when the ambulances are stuck at the hospital, we send that utility truck to the hospital with one of our paramedics. We offload the ambulance gurneys, and one, our one paramedic will stay there instead of, say, five or six of the ambulance paramedics that may be at that hospital.
I've often wondered, and maybe because I watched the wrong TV show several years ago in LA, where in Los Angeles, each of the fire stations had a paramedic unit, so when it was a first-aid call, they didn't send an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar piece of fire equipment and three or four people, they sent two people and a paramedic unit.
Yes, sir.
And I've often thought that was a great idea and a substantial savings to the taxpayers, but I've never seen that discussed in this county.
We've had quite a few discussions with the city manager as a proposed model as we move forward. As the city builds, starts getting built out, your fire stations are located in the right spot for fire suppression. And we do need to look at a more cost-effective model for delivering that survey and use service, and having a paramedic squad is one of the more better models and adopted to the industry standard. Putting a paramedic squad at the airport is one of the first steps to starting that model, and as the city grows, our call for services are going to increase. We're going to need to add paramedic squads throughout the county to accomplish that mission.
Yeah. Dan and I were just talking earlier today, actually. We've talked a couple of times about this, and I know it's been a concern of yours, Mr. Cox, sending the fire truck to, sometimes you'll call it the stub toe call, basic sort of first-aid type calls. And in discussing it with the Fire Chief, rather than completely upsetting our current service model, we've been talking about the need for growth in next year's budget and future years as well, as the city continues to grow. And the best alternative that we've come up with thus far is any growth would be through the use of paramedics and squad cars. That would only have two. Even at some point in the future, there may not even be full firefighter professionals that have that portion of the safety, but that's a lot of discussion between now and then. But as we grow, I think we're going to be more apt to grow with paramedics, as you're suggesting, rather than growing with additional fire trucks and fire apparatus.
Worth a discussion.
Yeah. Dan, before you sit down, in fact, Sam, you might want to relax a little bit. I do want to talk about COOPA, because that is a fire function. COOPA, oh, gosh, Dan, help me with what COOPA stands for. Certified Uniform...
Actually, brought the experts with me.
Okay, we have experts in the back.
To call them up to help address...
Certified Unified Program Agency.
That's correct.
Yeah. So COOPA was one of the functions that was housed north of the Development Department. In discussing embedding those fire employees into Development, the question came up about COOPA, and what are we going to do with COOPA? I made, what I thought was an innocuous decision, that it has turned out, I've heard, to not be so innocuous. But let me talk a little bit about COOPA. A couple of years ago, maybe eighteen months ago, the council was addressing the COOPA fees because they didn't fully cover the cost of the services that were provided. And ultimately, the council voted to, rather than raise the fees to a level higher and potentially be a profit center for the city, the council directed staff to set the fees at what it costs for the service, which is what's been done. There are currently, so effectively, it's cost-neutral to the city. COOPA is a separate fund in and of itself, and the fees are based on their actual costs. There are two COOPAs in San Bernardino County. We have one, and the county has the other. Larger cities in the county, such as Ontario, Ranch Cucamonga, and even San Bernardino City, I believe, rely on the county's COOPA for those services. They're both currently operated by San Bernardino County Fire. They operate their own COOPA, and they also, per contract, operate Victorville's COOPA as well. We actually reviewed a couple of proposals, the Development Staff and I, to bring the COOPA into the Development Department as part of maybe the, sort of, the plan check. It's really more of a field service that's provided. It's a public safety function rather than a development function, and we felt it was best that it remained tied to Fire.
Doug, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you tell us what COOPA is? Some of us have no idea.
COOPA, well, why don't we have the expert?
What does it do?
Ms. Wallace, get up and talk about COOPA.
Good afternoon. COOPA is a weird acronym. It stands for Certified Unified Program Agency, and it's a state-designated acronym, and the intent is to consolidate, coordinate, and make consistent all the COOPA elements.
What are the COOPA elements?
I miss out. There's another expert in the back. But we have the underground storage tanks, the APSA program, above-ground storage tanks, tiered permitting, hazardous waste business plans, meaning that if a entity generates any amount of hazardous waste and store certain threshold of hazardous materials, then they are legally required to submit a business plan. This means that if something happens at the business, the Fire Department will know what's going on there and can respond appropriately.
Hazardous waste?
It's mostly hazardous waste and underground and above-ground tanks, fuel tanks, basically. So when the Development Staff and I reviewed the option of bringing it over to the city, if you will, rather than part of the Fire Department, a couple of issues. One, because of the storage of these hazardous materials, we felt it was best handled by the Fire Department, as it's been traditionally at the city of Victorville for decades now. The current employee who handles Victorville's COOPA actually is in the safety unit. He successfully got his unit in PERS changed from the miscellaneous, all the city employees you see here in the audience, over to safety, which is what the firefighters were in. City doesn't have a safety unit in PERS any longer once, when we contracted with County Fire, that all went away, and it would not be advisable to have a single employee in one safety unit. The, operating a COOPA because of the above-ground and underground storage, as well as hazardous materials, does come with some element of risk involved with it. Mistakes are made, there is a potential for risk for the city. I did file a letter with the state when I learned of a six-month lead time for notification. I did file a letter with the state of our intent to dissolve our COOPA in anticipation of this discussion at the budget. This has, surprisingly to me, become a bigger issue than I was expecting it to. I know there's been some lobbying by the former Fire Chief and Councilmember Cabralis, as well as some other people. It's really not a threshold issue for staff. It's a, it's a no-cost item for the city's general fund because it's cost-neutral. If the city council prefers to keep the Victorville COOPA and have County Fire operate it, we can rescind our notice to the state and be done with it. It's really not, was not a big an issue, as, at least I didn't believe it to be a big issue for the city, but apparently, based on lobbying efforts, it has become that, and I apologize if I erred in that judgment, but it's, the COOPA, Victorville COOPA is still alive. It will be for another four or five months, unless we tell the state otherwise.
Since it's operating as cost-neutral, are the fees going to remain the same as the city's adopted them when the county takes it over?
The county's fees are slightly different from Victorville's COOPA fees, so in time, yes, the...
Slightly different, meaning it's higher?
It's higher. It's approximately fifteen to twenty percent higher.
Fifteen to twenty percent higher?
Yes.
Part of it is, we act as responders for those hazmat emergencies, and doing the budget review, there's one thing that the city hasn't been paying for, and that's as a responder. For instance, by the way, I'll just, I'll speak very highly of Mr. Kuhn. He's done a fantastic job over the years providing this service to the city. He's known expert. He's received great reviews, and I want to make it clear, this is not about him. But as a responder, the county has provided a vehicle, well over a hundred thousand dollars to, to this area, and also provided after-hours service. Part of our mission isn't only the regulation of the hazardous materials, but if there was any illegal dumping, we're responsible for going out there and making sure that those mitigation efforts are continued. Some of the fees, why they're higher for the county, is simply that those costs are built in, and either by oversight or by design, we've never included those costs to the city.
How have those costs been covered? How have those costs been covered?
When it was Victorville Fire, it was covered largely by the general fund. At this point, I suspect county is eating those costs.
The county is subsidizing those costs. It's, it's, it isn't, I'll be honest, my whole conversation with Mr. Kuhn since finding out he was going to retire is, we're here to work well with the city. We're here either to find somebody for the city to take the COOPA regulatory and the liability on themselves, or to continue to provide the service. Why would we do this is because Greg was a fantastic first responder, and after-hours, he was able to respond throughout the county. Is that emergency, he would be assigned a duty day, a certain amount of duty days per month. So that vehicle made sense and was sellable to the county. Hey, look, we have a great responder here that's well-trained, that can, that we could really use. Moving forward, those costs are not proposed in this year's budget. What we proposed this year initially was that the COOPA would remain with the city and just contract with the county. We didn't, we didn't include any cost increases for emergency after-hours services.
Doug, I noticed that the proposed budget is some, almost six hundred thousand dollars less. Is that what we're...
For Fire? For Fire? That would be the reduction in staffing more for the Development Side of the House than COOPA, although I don't know exactly how it's reflected in this total, the COOPA.
Okay, so is COOPA reflected in this proposed budget or not?
I would have to defer that to Bill Webb. I believe it is.
Well, the income is shown in this budget.
Okay, so COOPA is removed from this year's budget?
Removed from your budget? The end cabinet's in this proposed budget for the city?
Bill, why don't you come up to the microphone?
Finance staff has stated that COOPA was removed, and as far as the income being in there, was that removed? So you're correct, the income has not been removed yet. However, the expenditures have been. Yes. They have now been removed.
Well, but the expenditures are included in the county contract?
Contract. This was, what was happening, this happened within the last few months, less than that, the transition, and we were caught between, how much do we want to change at this point regarding the contract and the funds and the sources? Does it go through the Development Budget? Does it stay with? So some of it may have transitioned, some of it may have begun to transition, and then we pulled back and tried to retain it as it was.
Okay, so my question is then, understanding if things just remain the same, where the city maintained the COOPA, the proposed budget is thirteen million, thirty-two thou, or almost thirty-three thousand. That's a four percent decrease from fiscal year to, or previous fiscal year. If we were to turn that over to the county, how would that change that number?
We would have to double-check and make sure. If the revenues are still in there, then obviously the expenditures would go up.
Give me, I'm not looking at the revenue page. What is revenue?
Even though it's neutral, even though it's neutral, one can't be listed, obviously, without the other in the budget.
Well, it won't be cost neutral if we turn over to the county. They just told us it's 15, 20 percent higher. What's the revenue number?
Yeah, just for the recording purposes, it was approximately 215,000.
Okay, so even 215,000, so even at that 15 percent increase, we're still going to be down.
And a correction on that. The 15 percent increase is in the permits to the customers, not to the cost to the city.
Okay, correct.
That does not get passed on to the city either way.
The, so the staffing, the cost of staffing would remain the same? Is that correct, Dan?
Coupa being-
Paid 17.
That neutral means that the permit fees are going to cover the cost for Coupa. So there would be no cost for staffing, no cost for this program at all, no cost for vehicles in the future, no cost for the hazmat equipment.
Okay, so I guess my question to you is, is Coupa contemplated in your number here or not?
Sir, these aren't my numbers. This is the city numbers. My contract overall with the Coupa was about a half percent higher this year. So I'm not real familiar with the budget numbers that are presented to you tonight. I'm sorry.
The question I guess needs to be asked is, is there a reason to keep it? Is there a reason to get, to transfer it to the county? Can we deal with that?
Yeah, I think that's a valid question.
Anybody propose to answer that valid question?
Well, the budget contemplated eliminating the Victorville Coupa as essentially redundant to what the county is already doing. You know, I was told earlier today that the state is also actively trying to consolidate Coupas where possible. There is potentially a little bit of cost savings to the businesses in Victorville, but it sounds like that's probably going to go away once county recovers those costs or is able to include that in the budget. So it, the element of risk that I mentioned, I can't really quantify, but there is some risk there. It, to me-
Is there a promptness factor if it's in San Bernardino versus if it's up here?
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's more of a field operation than, you know, someone coming into the counter. So I don't, I don't know that where it's housed is, is, you know, any big deal. There's also a headquarters office here for County Fire as well in the desert.
I take our customer service very seriously. One of the things with the Coupa being transferred to the county is that you have more than one inspector that's assigned. We take the approach of assigning numerous inspectors into the area and we're very prompt with answering our customers' concern. The city manager is very correct. This is an outsourced service. Generally, most of the business is conducted over the internet or via telephone calls on occasion. Our inspectors are out in the field meeting the customers. I will say, Victorville, it's had a lot of pride with its Coupa program. It's one of only three cities that I know of in Southern California that have kept it through the years and it is the only city in San Bernardino County. I think a lot of that's just due to the regulation nightmare that's evolved and the liability that can be associated with the hazardous material, possible hazardous material release.
Okay, I think we're done. Sam?
I'm glad you gave me the opportunity to sit down for that. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, city manager. Like Henry VIII told each of his eight wives, I promise I won't keep you long. There was about a 4 percent increase, as you can see from the screen, in the police budget this year. That increase does not represent an increase in current levels of service. There are three primary factors due to the increase this year. Number one, retirement costs. Number two, new patrol unit transition. And number three is the liability insurance rates. Safety retirement costs rates are up 6.14 percent. Professional staff retirement rates are up 2.65 percent. We're in the second year of our incremental cost increase for the marked units as we transition from the Crown Victoria, which Ford is no longer making, to the new Ford UAV vehicles. That will continue for the next three years at a cost of $741 per unit each year and we have 27 marked units. And number three, the liability insurance rates are up 110.05 percent this year. And that's the car insurance for our code-three and non-code-three vehicles and also our light and medium trucks. And that's just due to the amount of claims that were submitted in years past and the study's done.
What's the cost of the new vehicle, the SUV vehicle?
The new UAV is an increase of $741 per year, per unit for a total of five years as we transition. We have 27 marked patrol units and we have approximately nine UAVs in service at this time. Ultimately, all 27 vehicles will be replaced.
There are effectively no changes to the police budget, although there is some contemplated with the, that was mentioned both last week and earlier today with the deputy and the dog.
That is correct. There was one small $13,000 line item added as a result of, you called them volunteers. I'm going to call them inmate workers. Since we are also a city building, we no longer have inmate workers to perform the special service that we need such as car washing and cleanup and we're now taking those vehicles to keep them in decent shape to a local car wash. And we've added $13,000 as a new line item to this year's budget. Lot cheaper than any claims you may pay. That won't even cover one claim. I guarantee you that.
I just, Sam, you mentioned 110 percent increase in insurance costs and just, you know, things that you talk about that are not sustainable over time. Is there anything that the sheriff's doing to address that and is that just, is that a unique situation as a result of certain things that have happened over the last couple of years? Obviously, we know a lot about-
It's somewhat unique. The sheriff is actively participating in what's called an under-100 program. A lot of these large claims that were paid were due to crashes involving emergency vehicles and the citizenry and some rather large settlements were paid by the county, which affected all of the contracts. We have, like I said, I want to be careful about talking about this and I want to knock on wood. This year so far, we have seen a dramatic decrease in the number of crashes as compared to this time last year. And I don't want to jinx anything, but it is sporadic. It's unique. It's unpredictable. And as traffic increases, so do our collisions. Because these cars run 24 hours a day.
Does he self-insure?
I'm sorry?
Does the sheriff self-insure?
Yes.
With a pool statewide?
Yes, sir.
That's actually a county-wide.
All the other ones.
You get impacted pretty quickly.
Yes. I'm, annually, I'm invited to meet with the sheriff with all the other city managers and he went through some of the issues regarding these claims and this increase. There was, he mentioned two significant traffic collisions. One actually was on Air Expressway, not involving a Victorville unit, and one was out in the Highway 62 area, if I recall, and that one actually was involving embarrassingly two sheriff's department cars. One hit the back of another one and had quite a spectacular wipeout. The sheriff's department implemented as a result, a poster program utilizing the children of the deputies and it's a mommy come home safely and daddy come home safely campaign and those, from what I understand, those posters are then put up in each of the sheriff's department's, you know, locker rooms and whatnot to remind the deputies that although it's important to get to the call, it's more important to get home safely.
One more thing that made me think of it is, all of the new UAVs are equipped with backup sensors and cameras. The number one cause for sheriff vehicle collisions is unsafe backing. So we hope that that's going to improve that number significantly.
Sam, one other question. Part of what's been proposed as kind of an option before the council tonight is an additional deputy and a bloodhound dog. And I think you had mentioned to me, or you mentioned to the council at the last meeting, that should we move forward on that, and I believe the council will, I know that we are all anxious to have one of those in our city and the benefits that will provide. The sheriff would actually provide an additional deputy and bloodhound at the Victor Valley County Station. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's his commitment. We met with him and he gave that commitment to Doug face-to-face. And that will, what that will allow us to do is not kill the hound that we have in town, but they'll work opposite shifts and they can work with each other. Because the hound dogs just don't last forever.
I just think that's a great thing and a wonderful commitment on the sheriff's part. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly as a part of our making that decision.
So which one do we get? The bloodhound or the blue tick?
We're slated for the bloodhound, which is the better of the two.
I do have a question in regard to, the council voted not too long ago not to renew the contract for red light cameras. And the cameras are apparently were, I don't know if they still are, very busy. And I know that there's been two officers, I've seen them on motorcycles that do traffic. The same, we're going to have two officers still for traffic? Are there going to be three? Is there going to be any change at all? What do you see there?
There isn't a proposal for change in the number of traffic officers we have now, but we have five motor officers that work this city along with a DUI car that works in the evening and we have another traffic car that works this city solely focusing on traffic issues.
Okay. Just curious.
Any other questions for Sam? If not, Brandon, next slide. Public Works. We've got-
I've got a lot of questions, but I need a break. I'm sorry.
I think we should take it as we need it. Let's keep going.
Okay. So Public Works, you'll see two guys get up here. But I know the council knows and I'm sure all the employees know that Sean McGlade is retiring, in fact, to June 30th. So he acted as, and I don't even see him out there. He's out there somewhere. He acted as a, as an advisor for his two second-in-command. So for this year's budget, since they're the ones that will have to deal with it, they took on the responsibility of developing it and now presenting it. So Brian Gangler is up first to talk about his portion of the Public Works budget. Brian?
Thank you. I'm just going to cover engineering. Doug Matthews will cover the other components of Public Works. One thing I want to note is, under the department's summary, that's actually a combination of operations and maintenance and capital. So it's melded together in those different categories of engineering and public works and et cetera. And then down below, you'll see a capital item under the expenditures category, but there are some actual capital items up above too. So I'll start off on engineering. Engineering is, under the Public Works umbrella, it has several major functions. One of them is the Capital Improvement Program, the design inspection and construction management of it. Another component is traffic, which includes traffic engineering and also operations and maintenance for the traffic signals, designing, the striping. We also provide in-house support for the airport. Even though the airport manages their own airport projects, we provide support. We also provide support for Public Works operations and maintenance. For private development, we review infrastructure plans. We review projects along with building and planning and fire before they go to plan and commission. We are involved with plan and map review and permit issuance and expecting improvements out in the public right-of-way. And also surveying, it includes map review, construction staking. And that's basically the engineering department. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Brian, do you have any changes this year, this coming year at all?
The only, the only, there are two personnel changes. We're asking for two additional positions. One would be an assistant engineer. The other one would be a maintenance worker that's in traffic.
Now, is that reflected in these totals here, the budget totals?
Excuse me?
The increase, is that reflected here?
The increase is really not shown under personnel very significantly. It only shows a 1 percent increase, but that is all rolled into that personnel category.
Thank you, Brian. Doug, I guess you're up.
Before you go away, is that, what budget contains the streetlights?
That's under engineering.
Good evening again. So what I'm going to cover is if you look up on your top portion of the chart would be the four divisions underneath engineering, which would be Public Works, Municipal Utilities, Sewer, Sanitary, and Water. And basically, those are operations and maintenance divisions of Public Works. So it's your field workers. We have 133 total workers in these divisions and 90 percent of those, or over 90 percent are field staff. So for the benefit of new council members and those that haven't been city manager before, we'll kind of tell you what the breakdown of these four categories are. And even though the first one says Public Works, this whole department is Public Works Department. So I know that's a little confusing, but that's how they grouped them. Under the Public Works, we have gas tax-funded divisions, which include our asphalt maintenance, our shoulder maintenance, street sweeping, weed abatement, and open space and median maintenance. We have our LTF-funded divisions, which is our concrete maintenance, including sidewalks, curb and gutter, catch basins, handicap ramps, cross gutters, driveway approaches, as well as bus shelter maintenance and our transportation center. We have storm drain funded divisions, which take care of our storm drains, our drainage channels, our catch basins, and our drywells. We have assessment funded divisions and those are, the biggest is our landscape maintenance assessment districts of over 4 million square feet of landscaping that we use a contract service for, as well as our DFADs, our drainage assessment districts, and our MADS, which are our small pocket parks. We have enterprise fund divisions, which are CNG fuel stations. We operate two of those. And then we have two general fund divisions, one being graffiti abatement, and the others are fleet operations, which is 100 percent cost allocated to the departments that have vehicles and it's based upon how many vehicles you do have. Under municipal utilities, the next category, that's our Vemis Electric and our Vemis Gas, which primarily operate out at SCLA and then out at Foxborough. Our sewer sanitary, that includes our sewer collection system, lift stations, forest mains. And included in the budget up there, so in the numbers up there, we have included our industrial wastewater treatment plant and our reclaimed water, even though those are managed by the water department, which is our next category under there. The treatment plant is a lot of oversight of our contract operations and interfacing with our regional water quality control board. And our reclaimed water deals with our reclaimed water from VVWR as well as our own treatment plant and the distribution facilities and interfacing with a high-dissolve power project. Lastly, we have our water divisions, which include our water supply, water quality, and a water distribution system, our wells, reservoirs, pump stations, pressure-reducing stations, the R-Cube project, treatment disinfection, testing and reporting, our blending, water treatment plants, backflow programs, pipelines, hydrants and valves, service connections and meters. So those are what you see up in the top portion of this table. But more importantly, I think the takeaway from this slide is that if you look down at the bottom of the total operating budget, there's about a $4 million increase. But included in that is 5.4 million of capital. So while the whole budget went up 4 million, the capital went up 5.4 million. So as you can see, reflected in the bottom table, every category was reduced in Public Works except for personnel and capital. And Brian's addressed the capital projects already. The personnel expenditures are mainly due to- The personnel expenditures are mainly due to class and comp and merit increases that may be coming up. And there's a few new positions, a couple in our sanitary and drainage, and that's due to new requirements, reporting regulations, and enforcement practices by our state regulatory agencies. They're getting a lot more aggressive, enforcing some of the new rules out there, and it requires us to get around to some of our facilities more often. The other are some seasonal workers for weed abatement, that fills a void of the court sentence workers. So those are the only additions that we do have, and again, that's just a 3% increase in personnel costs. It includes class and comp, and our merit increases, as well as these positions. And I'm here for any questions.
I have a question on your, on some of the capital, this might not, it's rolling And it's a kind of a question that is not explicit, except when I came back in 2009, after three or four months of studying equipment that we had to have, I think we turned in 41 pieces of equipment that we really didn't have to have. We have bought equipment in the last few years, we've got some expensive equipment, and an employee brought to my attention that two pieces of that very expensive equipment hasn't moved in four and a half months. My question is, is there a cost-benefit analysis completed on very expensive equipment, that it might be better off renting it for the few times a year that it's used?
Sure, absolutely. One of the pieces of equipment, we do have a Vector truck currently that's sitting idle, and the workers we've added this year will be using that vehicle. As we mentioned, we do have an extra street sweeper, that's necessary just because of the amount of maintenance they take. We do have equipment like a Greatall that we're looking to surplus this year. So, as we see equipment that isn't being used, we certainly look to find ways to surplus it and get some money out of it. Most of our equipment replaces, as we talked about earlier, is from carb requirements. Emissions, you know, from now until 2020, we've met with all the departments to identify which pieces of equipment we're not going to be able to even utilize anymore, or there'll be unlimited hours, say 1,000 hours a year, or something of that nature. So, it's, we look to run them as long as possible. When we do recommend replacement, it's usually because they are so old that it gets hard to get parts for them anymore, and just the maintenance costs are so extremely high. But, don't get me wrong, we do have animal control vehicles out there that are extremely old and beat up. We have a graffiti truck that's well over hours. And one thing you have to consider when you think about, you know, the mileage on these trucks, I mean, these trucks are running every day, so it's not like your personal vehicle out on the freeway. These are going out, these dirt roads, and they are, they're being used heavily every day of the week. So, they do wear a little quicker than your average residential or, you know, personal vehicle.
Doug?
Yes?
Question on sewer and sanitary. We've got the entire collection system and the wastewater treatment plant. I don't know if this is doable, if it's, if it can be separated, but I'd really be interested in looking at this wastewater treatment plant going forward as a separate standalone function because of the potential for generating income with the power project. And it's all going to play into sewer rates that we're going to charge after the increases we've gotten from VVWRAs, and I just, I think it would, I don't know if it's doable, but I'd kind of like to see that.
It is doable. In fact, the city attorney and I have been working on bringing another workshop to the council to talk about some options that we have there. In some ways, it would actually be combining functions under a single umbrella, but for the express purpose of being able to capture those revenues and return them back to the city and water district appropriately. We'll get into that in more detail in the next few months.
Well, if I could just add on to that, I think the important part of that, whether it's a subitem of any of those or separate, is more dependent upon how staff wants to break it out. But, at the end of the day, we have three tools. We have water, we have the wastewater treatment plant, and we have power that we can provide to potential users at a reduced rate that perhaps some other municipality might not be able to provide. And being able to see how we can bring in revenue as well as benefit those end users is an economic development tool that we ought to be using a little bit more often. And at least being able to show that council members knowing about it, being able to talk about it, I think is an important part of that process.
And we're actually, I mentioned at the front end of the Public Works budget, that Mr. McGlade's retiring, and we will be doing a recruitment at some point this fiscal year. There is the potential for further organizational change as a result of that. We're kind of keeping an open mind as to what the entire Public Works Department, all those divisions that you see, might look like once that recruitment is done. It might be one department, it might be two departments. Previously, it was, I think, four. So, all those things are possibilities, it'll depend on that recruitment and who ultimately assumes those roles. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Next slide, please, Brandon. Economic Development and Airport. Mr. Metzler, I don't know if you wanted to handle this, I know originally you weren't scheduled to be here tonight, so you may not quite be ready, and you may ask Ms. Smith to do it.
Well, we are ready. Ms. Smith has done the heavy lifting on this item, so I'll certainly ask her to come up because she's got a lot of the detail as to what everything is rolled up to in our budget, and I think to make our budget simple for tonight's presentation, everything's been rolled up, but it's actually a compilation of a number of different things that include everything from business development, marketing budgets, to managing the various enterprises that we're responsible for, including things like housing trusts and successor agencies, and we also serve as the executive office for VITA. But, largest part of the budget, of course, you can see, is debt service, which Sophie can speak to, but then also rolled up just generally in SCLA, the Southern California Logistics Airport, is a number of different operations that, on a much more localized level, is very similar and provides and is responsible for providing services, very similar to what the city does citywide. SCLA includes divisions of operations and maintenance, security. It's got its own capital needs in terms of runways and things of that sort. And then it has large asset management responsibilities, which includes everything from managing its real estate portfolio to undertaking and conducting negotiations for new business development transactions. So, pretty extensive. Sorry if I stole some of your show, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Smith.
As Keith mentioned, I'm Sophie Smith, I'm Administrator over Economic Development, and Mr. Eric Ray is the On-Site Airport Manager for SCLA. We work closely together to oversee all of the different activities related to the airport, and the Economic Development Staff provides, as Keith mentioned, support to the airport in terms of business development, marketing, budgeting, those type of administrative duties are handled by Economic Development Staff. So, it only makes sense to present the budgets together. I did hand out and wanted to show the budget a little differently than the slide that's on display right now, because this is how, on a day-to-day basis, we manage our budget. We really separate the different funds that we oversee due to different restrictions and revenue sources for each of them. And I think that this may answer a little bit in more detail some of Mr. Cox's questions from earlier. So, combined between Economic Development Division and the Airport Division, there's 29 full-time staff, and we actually share staff in a lot of responsibilities. Some staff work full-time at the airport and others work here in City Hall, but provide day-to-day support to the airport. So it's a combined full-time employees number. Together, we have a budget this year of 35 million, a large part which is SCLA debt service. The handout that I provided shows, we'll start with the Southern California Logistics Airport side, shows a breakdown on a revenue versus expenditure basis of what we call the on-airport operations. This is all the day-to-day that Eric oversees. These are revenues that are generated from things like the leases that we have out there, fees for aircraft landing, maybe filming activity that's on the actual runway, those types of things. We have the budget there of about 8.3 million dollars for this year. It is slightly up from last year due to some renegotiations on leases that will actually bring revenues up and a couple of increases in the reimbursables category, which are also reflected in an increase to an expense lower. Below, you'll see the expenditures. I pulled out some line items there that you might be interested in. There was discussion on the, about the fire contract, the airport portion of the fire contract to provide our ARF services is 1.8 million. There's also a small budget that's combined between the on-airport operations fund and the off-airport operations fund, as well as the water department, and two Vemus funds that are all used and combined to create a $250,000 marketing budget that is used to go out and attract businesses that will locate to the airport, but also be users of the municipal utility services, just as Mr. McHeckren was talking about just a few minutes ago. The CIP budget for the airport this year is 1.4 million dollars. That is the portion that the airport operations fund will actually pay out. That is leveraged against the number at the bottom there, 7 point, almost 7.6 million dollars of grant funds. That is, the 1.4 is the airport's portion of it. So overall, what you see when you're looking at the on-airport operations, because there's no reliance on the general fund, the revenues that come in have to support the operation out there. You will see that there is a surplus that we're projecting of $84,000 for this fiscal year. There is a fund balance of approximately a million dollars that is available from prior year's operations, should another big-ticket item come to our, the attention come up, and we'll bring that to the council for their approval separately. The next fund is 452, which is all the off-airport operations. Those are the parcels that are, can be transferred in fee at one point, mostly the, that are subject to the master development agreement that we have. We do have some small lease revenues that we receive there, so you'll see a very small budget of $215,000 for all of the off-airport operations. And you'll see related expenditures, including personnel for the first time, we're actually charging some staff time for the work that we do out there. There's personnel, and the marketing budget for the first time is actually going to be spent, or allocated partially to this off-airport fund. So what you do see is our revenues, I'm sorry, expenditures of $58,000 exceeding the revenues that are planned for the year, but we've accumulated a small fund balance in prior years, and so there's an explanation there on the fact that there will be a, basically a decrease to fund balance, because we'll be relying on that. And then the last category there, Fund 455, is the debt service account. We talked about it a little bit earlier, but the annual debt service due is about 21 million 585, give or take. And there's a few fees that are accounted for in the actual debt service amount on the bottom, if you take a look. As was mentioned earlier, it's very difficult to try to plan for or even quantify what shortfall may be occurring because of the decrease in assessed values. So, we're pretty close to, in the next year or two, to reaching actually enough tax increment to actually pay the current year's debt service. But some of the problems with debt service are created more so by the cycle. That is a result of the dissolution and the ROPS process. Monies are not received as they're collected, as they were pre-dissolution, and so instead of money coming in and being received constantly throughout the year, the money's held with the county and distributed only twice a year, and it's not in a manner that is very conducive to our debt service schedule. And so, some of the defaults that Mr. Cox was asking about earlier have actually been added to, not just because of the lack of sufficient tax increment, but because of the cycle that we're forced to adhere to. So, you have money maybe available, but it's not available till six months later. So, there's a couple of different things contributing to the problems with the debt service. And I didn't hear you get your question answered earlier, but I believe the accumulated amount of defaults on the bonds is about 7 million dollars, and those are accumulated over the last several fiscal years, when assessed values in the project area dropped like 30%. So, starting in December of 2012 was the first default, and tax increment had dropped so significantly that there were, the default that year was bigger, and then it started getting better and better to where we're almost breaking even, so.
I have a question. The, in regard to the reduced income to property taxes, is that a reduction on the projections that we made or an actual reduction? Everyone I've talked to indicates their property tax bill went up. Why do our collections go down?
If you're talking about the city property tax that I mentioned earlier, it's...
All property taxes.
All property taxes are headed up right now. We'd like them to go up a little quicker, perhaps. The issue that I mentioned earlier, from the error that was made in the 2013 budget, causes the projections for this year to be lower than what the projections were last year, but we're not going to hit those projections. Projections this year are based on what we believe will be the actual receipts from last year.
Generally, in the past, I don't know current, but in the past, by end of March, we had most of the property taxes, except for the year-end cleanup, we had most of the property taxes. We knew what it was going to be within a small margin. Do we still got that information from the county, and do we, is it really down or is it up? Because everyone tells me that taxes are up, business people, residential people. Pay more taxes.
It's up. We overestimated last year, and that's why the projection is a little bit lower this year, even though the taxes are still increasing. However, they're not increasing as quickly as all of our bills.
Okay.
But for some reason, it takes, there's a delay, and the county's not estimating that that's being passed on to us as quickly or as much as we're all feeling, and people are all saying their taxes are going up. But it is still increasing at this point.
And as far as the schedule, a large portion of property taxes come in in December, and then at the end of May, we see it in June.
Okay, that's all.
Other questions?
One of the, yeah, and this may be more just clarification on bond indebtedness, but our payment obligation is to the custodian, and the custodian then disperses interest to the bondholders. Bondholders get interest payments until the bonds come due, and they've got to then give them all the money. But those are 30-year bonds and longer, so we've got, and there's about 385,000 of RDA bonds at the airport, am I right on that?
In total outstanding?
Yeah, 385 million, sorry. Missed a few zeros, wasn't it about that?
It's in that order, I don't have the exact number, but it's big.
And if, and if we're behind to an accumulated total of 7 million dollars, what, maybe 10 years into the, eight years into the process? That doesn't cause me a great deal of concern, gives us plenty of time to, for that tax increment to rise and to refill the bucket and have the funds available. And I've asked this question before, I don't think bondholders are out anything, except there are some very subordinate bonds that, where that may not be the case.
There are, yeah, the defaults, and it's probably that 7 million or so is largely attributed to the subordinates. I do know as much that we've got some reserve funds that we've got to replenish as well, but it's largely the subordinates that are owed, and I, your understanding of the theory is right, that over time, those amounts as assessed values and actual collections in the project area increase over time, that there's adequate funding to pay those off. One concern that we're monitoring, and it's a pretty significant role we play in serving as the successor agency enterprise, we've been battling with the state extensively over interpretations of what is an enforceable obligation for the ROPS process. over interpretations of what is an enforceable obligation for the ROPS process. And sadly, we've got some very troubling news that we actually had to alert on the investor markets last week or two weeks ago, as to their interpretation of our ability to collect tax increment revenues above and beyond the actual current debt service amount. And we're a little bit concerned, we first think the state is misinterpreting what is the enforceable obligation, but we're, we're getting concerned that they're, in their only approving current outstanding debt service amounts as an amount to be distributed to the city, it could make it difficult for us to collect surplus money, if you will, to, to cure past outstanding. So that's a matter that we are monitoring very closely. We actually unfortunately had to alert investor markets. It's an issue that we think is going to be a legal matter, that we're going to have to discuss even further than the legal matters. We've had extensive discussions with Department of Finance about, but that's something as a future outlook to be, be mindful of.
Thing that's always worth mentioning about these, these are RDA obligations. The only security, the only claim that bondholders have is against tax increment. The city will never be obligated to retire those, the city, the citizens of this community.
That point is correct, and that same applies to, to the airport, because when the airport, you know, in fact, did have redevelopment, it really effectively had two sources of funds, and even though we pledged it largely to debt service, the, the airport authority had operating revenues, which is the, the money that Sophie is speaking to in the, that's not broken down there, seven or eight million dollar operating budget, but then also it had the debt service. So your point is the same and holds true as it relates to the airport authority, that it's not lease revenues or landing fees that are security for those bonds. So we can still at least continue to use airport operating money to pay for things like crack ceiling and, and concrete repair and things of that nature.
Question. If there is past debts that haven't been paid, and the state has ruled that you can only use the annual indebtedness to collect the money, that essentially means the state has ruled that we cannot pay any of the past debt that hasn't been paid that's in arrears, which means that we have to notify the bondholders, we're not going to pay them. It looks like to me that that would trigger a lawsuit immediately.
Well, I don't want to speculate about what, what investors could do, but certainly I would believe that that's an option they could explore. I think from the practical matter, though, we don't expect that to be a reality until such a time that the actual collections of tax increment, increment actually exceed the total debt service amount. And right now, we're still in catch-up mode. I believe the fiscal consultants, I'm sorry, the continuing disclosure report showed that we would probably be at par in terms of collections versus debt service in the 16, 17 fiscal year. So right now, it's, it's physically can't, you know, I, I don't know that there's an immediate impairment, but I think in a few years, there's likely to be, and, and that's something that I guess they'll have to decide, along with us, will have to decide if there's something further we can pursue.
But we, we have officially notified them on June 1st that we have this concern based on the DOF's latest decision, so we did our disclosure as required.
We've notified the trustees.
The trustees, and, and it was distributed through the Emma system.
Okay. We've done our part.
Yes, yeah, we, we have.
Any other questions on SCLA, just before I quickly go through the backside?
Like, um, you're worth addressing capital at least for the airport, or is that something Eric was going to do later?
Want to just talk quickly about the five projects that are included?
Yes. Or at least speak, just highlight the two major, we've got two major capital improvement program, projects going on right now that are going to be finished up through the fiscal year, and I think it might be worth talking about what we foresee probably breaking ground on in the latter part of the fiscal year, given news we got today.
Certainly, thank you. The first phase of our runway 321 replacement is underway now, it's about half done, just a little over half done. That's a $5 million roughly project. We hope to transition very quickly, as we are now designing the first phase of the big runway, the runway 1735 project, so we hope to transition into that very soon. We got word yesterday from the FAA that they're committing about 4.6 right now, program, about 4.6 right now for us, that would give us about 5 million with the match, but they're going to continue to seek other, what they call fallout monies as the, as we near the end of the federal fiscal year. So we're hoping we might do a little bit better in that. That being the case, we hope to, early in December, to have award another contract to start on that runway as well. Meanwhile, the fuel farm project, the remote rack project is going quite well, we hope that to be done in November. Got an EDA project that we're looking to award before long for about a million dollars, one of our most desperate taxiway intersections needs to be replaced, so we're hoping to push that ahead as well.
Just finishing up on the economic development budget, and I just wanted to highlight Mr. Kennedy's point, and the reason that I've presented for you the debt service fund separate from the other airport accounts, is because the only revenue pledged for debt service is the, the tax increment from the former redevelopment agency. So just from a presentation, presentation standpoint, I wanted to show the 450 and the 452, those are your day-to-day operations out there, and that is a self-sufficient operation as of today. The display up here actually combines a few other economic development functions to, to get to the $35 million total budget. And just very quickly, those are the successor agency budgets that are for the other project areas that the RDA used to have, the Bear Valley and Old Town areas. So we're in the mode where we're basically paying off debt service and a few other outstanding enforceable obligations. We do get funding for personnel, because we do still spend a significant amount of time each week breaking down the former RDA and complying with all of the different state requirements as a result of that process. Your Victorville Housing Trust is the Victorville Housing Successor Agency. We were able to keep millions of dollars of assets through the dissolution process, and this fund is where any of those properties, if they happen to be sold, or some loans receivable that were also transferred to the Housing Successor Agency, if payments come through on those, revenues are received and booked here, and so those are still all under city purview. They were kept separate from the rest of the dissolution process. And then finally, economic development oversees the administration, as you know, for the CDPG home and NSP grants that are still remaining from, NSP is remaining from 2009 and 12, I believe. And the, these dollars that you see here with a zero, zero balance as far as revenue over expenditures, represents this year's portion of the administration that goes on to run your programs, like the First Time Home Buyer Mortgage Assistance Program, the Senior Home Repair Program that we have, and the owner occupied program that we have. That's it, any other questions? Thank you.
Brian, the next slide, please, I think that might be all of our department budgets. Next up, Josie Trevino is going to talk about the PERS employee, employer share, and kind of walk through the PERS discussion.
Good evening. I wanted to give you a brief presentation or a brief summary of the CalPERS employee contribution and the recommendation that is included in the budget. Historically, the City of Victorville has paid both the member contribution of a percent and the employer contribution, which is currently this year, or it will be 17%.
Seven-two?
17% for the employer contribution. And this is for the employees' retirement benefits. This is similar to what many other public agencies did up until pension reform was implemented in 2013. At that time, the tide began to turn against employers paying the employees' share of cost to fund their retirement benefits. The class and compensation study confirmed this trend and found that in average, that on average, other employees paid about 3% of their share of PERS. Therefore, included in this proposed budget is the elimination of the city-paid member contribution, which is the employee's share of 8% for classic employees, since the PEPRA or new employees are already paying their employee's share. We are recommending that this contribution from employees be on a pre-tax basis. Also in the proposed budget include, is included a 5% increase to full-time salary ranges to bring the salaries up to the class and compensation study average.
Have any questions?
Yes, I have a quick question, two, two questions. One, the 17% employer share that the city's currently paying is ridiculous, and I want to know who and when that was approved, or was it always like that? That's the first question. What city council, was this always like that?
Sorry, that's a number that, that fluctuates annually, based on the contributions that are held by CalPERS. Every year, we get a different amount. There have been years that it's been significantly lower, there have been years that it's been higher, but that amount is determined by CalPERS, not by the city council. It's part of the PERS contract.
Well, let me restate that, the 8% employee share paid by the city, was that always there, or who approved that?
The 8% share is the, per the contract, is called the employee share. I don't know if it changed, if, if it did change, when it changed. Josie, I don't know if you have any history, I've been here for 13 years, I know there's others that have been here longer, I don't know that it's ever been paid by the employees in the past.
As far as I know, it has always been paid by the city on behalf of the employees.
Okay, because it's just a sustainability question, we've seen what happens in other municipalities. The other thing is, how much is the 5% full-time salary increase actually, per year?
We actually have a, a slide which will include some numbers that might be helpful when you consider any decisions or the impact of the budget.
Before we answer that question, just for clarity's sake, the 5% was essentially in keeping in concert with the class and comp study, because the other agencies, their employees were paying approximately 3%, that would have affected the class and comp by 5% in salary. So that's where that number came from. It's not a magical number or anything, but that, it's effectively where, where that came from. But you can see there, it's, the 5% is just under 500,000 for the general fund, citywide total is about 1.6 million.
I don't know where the numbers are, but somewhere in reading the budget, it gave, there was a paragraph indicating salary correction, I guess, one and a half, a one, a half, and a five. Cost of living was withheld and so on. Is that somewhere around 7.5% total? Was that correct? No, was not correct, okay.
0.7.
6.7.
If, if you included the adjustments to employees in this budget, when you add the COLA, PAS COLA, the 5% is 6.7. And the discussion is the 8% total of employee-paid PERS. That is why, for discussion purposes, we put forward this showing the salaries and the impact of what the 8% is, what the 5% is, what the remaining three other than 5% is, just for information, of what employees will be paying as proposed, out-of-pocket proposed in this budget, or the 1.3, which is where you're at, Mr. Cox, as far as the remainder after the 6.7 of adjustments that are included in this budget.
Thank you.
Questions?
Anything else, Bill? That's everything we've got as far as presentation. Obviously, we're all still here for discussion. Questions?
I was on, I finally found it, or I think I found it, page 24. Included is a 2015 cost of living adjustment, 5/10%. Additionally included, 1.2 partial salary increase based on COLA is not given in the past, increase of 5% to bring salaries up to classification study, then 1% last year. So that's 7.7%.
The 1% is actually the current year.
Oh, okay, so I counted the 1% twice, sorry, so it's 6.7.
Yes.
All right, that's what I was asking.
Do you have anything else?
That's all the staff presentation, we're certainly all here, available for any questions.
There was reference to the state legislature passing a law, assuming it's a law, I think it was law, in regard to employees' retirement systems. Exactly what did that legislation require?
That legislation required all new employees effective January 1st, 2013, are on a different schedule for retirement, as far as the way their retirement is going to be calculated. It also requires that all those new employees pay their share, the employee's share. For classic employees, those employees hired prior to January 1st, 2013, that's 8% that we all have come to know and love. For the Pepper employees, I think it's more like 6.5 or so, because their retirement calculations are not as lucrative as for classic employees. The exact wording of the law was confusing. Back in 2013, when it was first passed, the analysis that was made available to us was that it required that within five years, all employees pay the employee's share. But then there was a question about that, because it didn't, wasn't that specific. It specifically said half of the normal cost, and left that up to agencies to determine what that meant. I can tell you, as of today, it's still confusing. I can tell you that most agencies are moving towards having the employees pick up that full 8%. I know one agency in the Valley, Hesperia, their employees pick up the full 8% plus an additional 1% pursuant to a negotiated collective bargaining unit contract, that they pick up 1% of the additional employer cost. So exactly what the law says, I, I don't know that it's, it's clear enough. I can tell you that last year about this time, we learned that it's more permissive than absolute. However, you know, agencies are trending towards having the employees pick up the employee's share, which on the surface seems to make sense, so.
Anything else?
I do have a card, and Wade Piper, if he will pop in, state your name.
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you again, Mayor, Council, for allowing me to speak. First thing I'd like to kind of address is, it was brought to my attention that there was a rumor going around from me speaking last week in Jeffrey, that somehow we were possibly being punished for saying our views. I'd like to go on record and say that was absolutely not true in my case, you know, I'm sure Jeff is the same thing, but I never heard nothing negative as far as me making my comments, so. Wow. Lot of information tonight, you know, I came in with kind of an idea, you know, what I had wanted to say, and, you know, things are changing, but I guess one of the things that come up was the, one of the slides said that other agencies are, the trend is to the employees to pick up the, the share. One of my One of my questions that I thought about was, how did that come about? Did, was it a reduction in the employees' pay? Or did they increase the pay and start to make that requirement at that point? I mean, last week, some of the things that Mr. Cox had brought up was, he wanted to hear different options. And, you know, I'm sure that you guys have thought of different options, and that, and some of the things, you know, you can look at it as proposed. You could look at it as, what I talked about last week, you know, there could be a straight across 8% raise, and then we assume the responsibility. No matter what the law's changed from that point on, it's, it's kind of, if the state says, well, the employee has to increase, you know, at that time, well, I guess, you know, that's part of it. But that would be a cost-neutral, I believe, for the city and the employees. One of the other things, there could be the 5%, the 1.7%, and defer the 1.3% to another time. I believe it's 2018 that we have to make a decision, or whether you actually have to make a decision or not, but that's the goal. It could be 5% and the 1.7% cost of living actually go to the employee as a cost of living, not as a cost of PERS.
You have 30 seconds.
Excuse me?
30 seconds.
Defer the 3%. Well, I've got a lot to say, but anyway, I guess in summary, the employees have taken a lot, you know, in the last few years. We've reduced staff, we're still here, trying to do our job. We basically just don't want to get hit anymore. You know, if the economy's getting better, maybe deferring, you know, hitting the employee might be, you know, an option. But right now, I'm speaking for myself, I really, I don't want to go backwards anymore. I've gone backwards a lot in the last, you know, seven years.
Good time is up.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor and the Council, just not to respond to Wade, but just, he had mentioned options. That was sort of the purpose of the one slide that we did develop, to kind of show the various costs. The budget was developed based on all the conversations this council's had over the last, I'll say, six months. You know, whether it was the class and comp, whether it was the extra add-on items. I know from talking with some of you individually, that, that the council is split on exactly what to do here. Perhaps that's why we ended up somewhere sort of middle of the road with what's in the budget. Certainly, the budget Ryan mentioned last week is a living, breathing document, and it's not even a living document yet today, it's still yet to be approved. So the council has a variety of options to either, you know, make known tonight, if someone is going to make a recommendation, or to direct the staff to come back at a later time with adjustments based on conversations we have tonight. The entire budget is wide open. I get concerned a little bit with some of the tensions that I've felt over, I'll say, the last year on some of the items that have come before the council. The purpose of the items coming to the council, as you all know, is for discussion. It doesn't mean that, that this is locked in stone, and absolutely must be either approved or denied. Certainly, there are a few items that that happens on, but in large part, the purpose of these items is for discussion purposes, modification if the council so desires, and so for that reason, the budget is wide open.
I have a question, I'm sure. Forgive me if this is not the city, I sit on three other boards, but in health insurance, on a bid for health insurance, it was up 34% from over the last year. Was that City Victorville's new health?
We, our original negotiation, if you can call it that, started with a potential 40% increase. We actually...
Where did it end up?
Well, there, it ended up with an additional option. There is an option for Aetna, that is, I think, a 40% or close to that, higher increase. However, by dropping one local provider, we have a second option, which is called a limited availability or limited something or other option, and it actually ended up, if you chose that option, to a rate reduction of, I think it was either 2% or 3%.
So the employees aren't going to, the employees aren't going to be hit then with a 40% increase in health insurance?
They have options that do not hit them that way, yes. The only ones I could think of that, if they have a specific doctor that they are absolutely committed to seeing, they could, they could take that option, but I don't think it was a particularly popular one.
I was just trying to put the numbers together, I was just, with the information, now's not the time to do it. But I thought staff was negotiating that, so that it'd be still good coverage for the employees, they wouldn't get hit, and the allocation that the city makes toward health would still cover it. Are we, the employee having to make up this difference?
The employees that opted into, that either have the Kaiser Plan or that limited plan, actually have a savings this year of about 2% or 3% over last year's costs, for that health insurance.
Thank you.
That's item number one. That's all that I have for item number one. Do we have to make a motion, or do we?
I'm going to move to approve the budget.
And are we including the items that are listed? Part of that, the original memorandum, Public Information Officer, Police Deputy, and trailing bloodhound. I just want to make sure if that's a part of your motion.
I understand is that it is included.
Yes.
All right, then I'll second.
This is on item, item one, is that correct? All the resolutions under item one?
Item one.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern, to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti voting no.
Now we're going to item two, is that correct?
Correct.
Discussion and possible action on CalPERS employee contribution is set forth in the resolution below.
Do you, do you have any more cards, Madam Mayor?
I do. I have two cards. The first one is Liz Becerra, and following will be Maggie Lo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel. In sitting back here in the meeting, it started in one way what I was going to say, but now it's ended up in another. Seven years ago, we lost 12% of our wage. Since then, nothing has been given back to us up until three years ago. It has not equaled 12%. Now you're talking about taking an additional 5% of my wage for PERS. You've taken 40 hours of my vacation, now you want to take 5% more of my wage. I'd be the first to say, you don't like it, go find another job elsewhere. But I like it here. I've given most of my life to this place, and so has a lot of these employees behind me. When do you stop taking from us, and when do we meet in the middle by saying, we want to stay here? 5% of our wage and help us with a PERS. You know, I understand that we didn't pick the retirement system either. When we got here, we didn't have a choice of PERS or Social Security. It was PERS, and that was it. So whoever picked it, whoever did it, the city was incorporated back in 1967. I don't think PERS was around. Somebody stood around and said, "Social Security ain't going to be around by the time some of us retire." It is what it is, it's what we have. We've never gone to another retirement, and this retirement has gotten a lot of employees in it. You know? Let's, let's meet halfway in the middle. If you can't give us a whole five now, at least, like Wade said, two, one, three, let's meet halfway in the middle. Keep some of the employees you have. Thank you.
Maggie Lo?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed counsel. I'm just going to launch right into it. I am a retired CalPERS employee, some of which was from the city, and a bulk of which was from the High Desert School District. I'm not real good with the numbers and stuff, and I've been out of the loop with what goes on in the numbers and the politics with the city, but I will tell you, I have a lot of contact, be that good, bad, or otherwise, with people here in city departments and police department, and I kind of keep my finger on things. And I've never heard one person say, "We like taking a step backwards." Let me set that aside for just a moment. When I worked for the school district, and I don't, I didn't bring paycheck stub, because I didn't know it would come up, but I remember looking at my stub, and I know different agencies have different contracts, but I was astounded and pleased. I paid, let's say, 250 into my retirement a month, and the school district paid like four and a half. So I raked it down. And, and I'm glad, no offense to the city, I'm glad I retired ultimately from a school district and not the city. Because when I worked for the city, and that was long before three of you ever sat on this council, they had extremely generous package, where I was taking home and putting in the bank $600 surplus above and beyond my salary, because I only had myself and my one dependent child. It was very generous, and the salary was very generous. But I just see over the years, the shrinkage, the shrinkage. And I want to sum it up very simply by saying, I feel, I, I like what Ms. Becerra, Liz, said, is, you know, keep these long-term employees, they are the backbone of this city. They are the backbone, like I was, scrubbing floors for the school district. Because if I don't scrub the floors and they're not the backbone, this city would come to an absolute screaming stop. Period. So please just do whatever you can do to negotiate and continue discussion about, let these people always be two steps ahead and not three steps behind. Thank you very much.
Those are all the cards that I have. So do we take a motion now, or?
Yes, you have several resolutions before you, and I think you have a staff recommendation. Apparently you have options with respect to that recommendation.
I have a comment first. One of the reasons why I wanted to know who and when these decisions were made in the past is because when you start giving somebody something that is not in alignment with the normal compensation package, whether it's increased vacation hours, or paying their employee retirement share, it stops becoming a benefit and becomes an entitlement. And then what happens is, is that the city is forced to make tough decisions in tough times, people get laid off. And what we're trying to do, at least what I'm trying to do, just so that everyone's clear, I want a balanced, comprehensive, consistent approach to compensation for everyone, whether we're talking about retirement, whether we're talking about vacation, whether talking about salaries. And so what you see here is us going through this, and we're obviously going to do this every year, is that you look at the Public Information Officer as an example. I don't want to debate whether or not we even need one. I'll defer to Mayor Protem's Cox experience and say that we do. But what had happened before is, we had four people, correct me if I'm wrong, three or four people in public information.
Yeah, at one point, we had four people there.
So that's not reasonable, okay? From what I'm seeing, if we're operating without a public information officer, why in the world would we have someone making X amount, and then three folks helping them out when no one was doing it? So I, you know, I look at this, whether it's street sweepers, or whether it's public information officer, I get the need, but we have to be reasonable and good stewards of the city's resources and the tax funds that we receive. And so, you know, it's unfortunate that we have to go through this, but unfortunately, there were decisions made before. That vacation hour package, I thought was overly generous. And I don't know why in the world, and I believe it was in 2009, that they changed it. So what you have is inconsistent guidance, inconsistent thought processes on all of this as you switch out council folks, and the years go by. And so, if anything, I know that this is painful, and morale is important. And that's why, when I say, we need to right-size the budget, we need to right-size these positions, we need to go back to basics and get back to a five-day work week, that's also a 10% increase, but it's a 20% benefit to the residents of services. So it's a win-win, there's win-win opportunities out there. But if the city staff does not want to go back to five days a week, which is all I keep hearing, I just don't know, I just don't want you to think that there's, that we're taking, we're taking, we're taking, we're trying to fix this, so we can sustain the city going forward. And of course, we have a lot of great folks, and we don't want to lose those folks. But you know what? There are trade-offs to be made by everyone, and this is about service. So I'm more than happy to listen and, and, and sit here, and I understand the situation, but what we're trying to do is fix things that were not appropriate, approved in the past, and so, that's it.
Anyone else?
As, as the attorney said, there's a point of clarification. Just to explain this item, the resolutions. The first resolution is to notify PERS, or I believe, yeah, is tax deferment, meaning that any PERS paid by the employee shall be taxed deferred, shall be paid pre-tax. And so that's the first resolution. And this is, these are standard PERS resolutions as far as switching over the, the PERS contribution to the, from the city to the employees. The second resolution is already filled out, and by having a zero in, 0% of the benefit for EPMC, what it's stating is, is the reverse. The employee shall pay 8% of their share of PERS. That one's already filled out, if that's the choice of this evening. The third resolution...
Bill, excuse me. Doesn't the contract provide that the employee's share is 8% of pay? They're not paying 8% of their...
No, the employees are picking up, yes, the employees are paying 8%.
Of pay.
Of their salary.
Their full, their full share of the employee's share, which is separate. Retirement benefits by law are separate from compensation. So what we've discussed regarding COLA, regarding class and comp, is a separate discussion. So when calculating what's going to be the immediate hit to, to the employees, that's been discussed, that there are pluses and minuses in this budget. However, the law sees those different. One is a benefit, and one is compensation. So as far as their benefit, they will be paying the 8%. The compensation issue is a different subject, which has already been discussed, class and comp, and as Mr. Cox noted, the, the COLAs over the last two years.
You know, and just, just so everybody understands the significance of the pre-tax contribution, it means that contribution is made before income tax is calculated.
Yes.
Which means the net out-of-pocket will probably, I mean, you know, it's hard to know what employees' tax rates are, but their incremental rates are probably going to be about a third of that will be paid for by income tax savings.
Yes. And if I may add something to the conversation, it wasn't asked, but in looking at this, we did as much analysis and put forward as much information to the employees as possible, including trying to calculate the, the net change to their checks. And this is a very unique year, because we've been trying to deal with this PERS issue for, as the city manager said, a couple of years. This year, with the class and comp involved with COLAs returning, the actual average is, my understanding, in change per month for an employee is an additional $7. So there's a great variance of where people are going to fall depending upon the class and comp and et cetera. But this is the only opportunity, due to those circumstances, where it's, it's, the least amount of people will take the least hit, due to the class and comp, et cetera. So what we've got is a net average gain of almost $7 per month, as an average. Finally, the third resolution here is the only one that needs to have a determination different than what's drafted, unless you wish to change any of the other ones. The third resolution applies to city council-specific. The third resolution applies to city council-specific. And with, the staff report outlines any issues involving city council compensation and city council benefits, as well as we could with advice from the personnel attorney, so if you've seen that, it describes various scenarios. We left a blank, if the city clerk could see on the second bullet about halfway down the page. Should the city council decide to also pay 8% your share of PERS, that blank to the city clerk should be a 0%, the same as the employees'. It was left blank at the discretion because we had had no input and we had nothing to balance it again. So if, like other employees, the council should choose to pay the 8% PERS, there should be a zero inserted there in the motion at percent. If there's some other number...
Does anybody think we should do something different than the employees? Absolutely not. Whatever they got to live with, we live with.
I've never understood why city council members get PERS anyway. I think that was the most ridic, I, I, apparently that's the law, I don't get it, unless you're a part of some other retirement plan, you get it. So I, it's not something I wanted, not something, that's not the reason I'm up here, but, but for whatever reason, we get it. But I would absolutely not encourage this council to take something different than whatever the rest of the employees get.
I've never asked. Do I get 8% for retirement?
You do not.
I don't get it, why should you guys get it?
You are not affected.
No, I don't get anything.
Not affected either way, but you won't, you won't, you won't lose 8% either.
As a person who it's, you do not get PERS.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure.
Madam Mayor, I need to make some comment here. I don't think anybody's surprised or unclear about my position on this. I have believed employees should pay their employee's share. I've always believed that. That's how it works out in the world, in the, in the world of for-profit entities, where there is a retirement plan with an employee's share, the employees pay it, employers don't. I, I just believe that is what most of the people in this community who work live with that kind of a, of a plan.
Assuming they have one.
Yes, assuming they have one. I also have to say, and Liz, I, you know, I have a great, I certainly sympathize with what you're saying, I'm, the problem is that almost everybody in this economy has gone backwards for the last seven or eight years. I, I don't know anybody who has just sailed on through and didn't take any hits. Again, I'm speaking for the private sector, so, you know, maybe it's different in the public sector, maybe some cities never felt the pain. Also have to say that my priority is, and always has been and always will be as long as I'm here, to deliver the best quality of service that we can deliver to our community with the resources we have available. I'd like there to be more. We have what we have, that's what we have to work with, and I believe this budget does that. So I'm, I'm going to support the fact that employees and council members pay their 8% share. Well, do we need to do them one at a time?
We don't need to if, if the motion includes, and everybody's on board with, the third resolution, 15041, having a zero put in there, meaning that the council will then also give up the 8% contribution, basically make their own 8% contribution.
I'd move approval of all three resolutions.
And for the record, I just want to clarify on item number one, and you made the motion and adopted it, that also included the other two resolutions that were on the DIAS for the Housing Trust and Successor Agency. I just want to make that clarification.
That was a part of the overall.
Right.
You know, there's just one other thing, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind. I've been on this council five years, and we've spent a lot of time living with decisions of past councils and figuring out how to work with those, how to fix them if we could, and how to do the best we could do, given the decisions that we couldn't control. I'm not sure why anybody decided the citizens should pay the employee's share. They did. It's painful, and I'm, I'm not happy about this decision, but I do think it's the right way to go.
I'll second your motion.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckren. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I don't have any other cards, so we move on to item number three.
For this item, I'd request that Councilmember Kennedy and Councilmember Cox would accuse themselves, this is dealing with the golf course budget, and due to the proximity of their residences on the golf course, it could be deemed to be a conflict.
Madam Mayor, I'll move for adoption of the golf course budget as soon as they are out of the room.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Mr. Cox and Mr. Kennedy absent.
Now we move on to public comments. I have no other cards, and I don't see anyone that wants to get this time.
I have one. I'd like to thank the city staff, the city manager, assistant city manager. I'd also like to highlight the airport. I think it's a fantastic asset, I wish we could do more out there, but, you know, anyway, it was a great job, and I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.